Okay, good evening and welcome to the Millbrae City Council Meeting of June 9th, 2020. Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Lee.
President.
Councilmember Pappan.
President.
Councilmember Oliva.
Here.
Vice Mayor Schneider.
Present.
Mayor Holliver.
Present.
All members of the council are present.
Okay, will you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty Okay, well, beginning tonight, we have three proclamations. Maybe we can take these one at a time. It's quite different, but first, we have a proclamation condemning the murder of George Floyd, as I'm sure everybody knows. On May 25th, Mr. Floyd was killed by a police officer in Minneapolis who had had his knee on his neck for eight hours and sorry, eight minutes and 46 seconds. And after that event, that sparked, you know, a series of protests around the country, you know, against police brutality and systemic racism, and we are standing together in condemning that killing and also standing up for in solidarity with all the protesters, you know, demanding justice around the country and around the world. And do we have any comments from the council?
Mayor, we do have comments from the public, so let me know when you're ready.
Okay, well, let's start with the council. Use the raise hand feature.
Okay, raise hand feature.
Looking for the raised hand.
Okay, Councilman?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is an important issue. It's been a long time coming. Someone said that this has been going on for 400 years. Racism has been around for centuries. And unfortunately, you know, I think Jackie Speer says it said it best, I'm white, therefore I'm racist. I'm not saying all whites are racist, but I'm saying what if you don't, if you don't admit your, if you don't know you're racist, then you need to find out what it means to be racist. And I know people have the best intentions, but sometimes we just don't know, and I encourage everybody to learn what it means to be a racist, what it means to be racist. I'm not immune. I'm pretty sure I have my racist views too, but I think that you can't solve that problem unless you know what it is. And as part of the Asian, San Mateo County Asian Pacific Islanders Caucus, we are encouraging and denouncing this type of any racism. We also know that there's a few bad apples in terms of policemen out there, and we hope that we can give it, do a program that will give our policemen better tools, weed out the bad, the bad bad apples. And the, I know, we rely on our public service a lot. They're not only just public safety officers, but they're also social workers, healthcare workers. You know, we, since we've been doing budget cuts on healthcare, mental health, the police officers has been pulling double duties, triple duties. So it makes sense to look at, you know, look at the type of things that that would prevent this type of thing from happening. And I'm grateful that this doesn't happen that often in San Mateo County. But it happens around the world and around, and particularly in our country. And I'm saying that a lot of us would love to be able to talk to people about what racism racism is, what our experience has been. And I encourage anybody to contact me and I'd be happy to talk to them about what, what, what is meant to me, what was happened, what has gone and happened to me. So I'm pretty sure I have other people who would like to also volunteer to speak, speak about what their experience has been. I would encourage them to do as well. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, Councilman Lee. Vice Mayor Schneider?
Hi, and I'm sure the city manager will probably speak about this. This coming Saturday, there'll be a march and vigil for Mr. Floyd. Meet at Central Park at noon. The course, I'm sure, city manager can go into more detail. There'll be a short set of presentations and a vigil. Please join us. It is family friendly and it is peaceful. So please come and join us.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, may I? Just to clarify for the record, this is not a city sponsored event. And it's not a city sponsored event due to the county health officer shelter in place. We've received direction from Assistant County Counsel and our legal counsel relative to the shelter in place order. And the city cannot participate or promote any type of social gathering that would be adverse to the current shelter in place order. And so for the record, the city is not sponsoring or promoting the event on Saturday due to the current shelter in place order. We will have volunteers present and we will, we've been working with the sheriff's office to ensure safety of those people that do want to freely assemble in March on Saturday.
And I would only add that they have been given instructions on social distancing according to the county health departments, how to, how to behave and be as safe as possible in the event that you're participating in a public protest. In this case, it's not really a protest, it's a vigil.
It's more of a rally, yeah. And I thank you, Mr. Mr. City Manager, for helping the community express their frustration and the right to protest. You and Sheriff's Department, I have full confidence that we will be, everybody will be safe. And it would be a very good event for the community.
Yeah, without reservation, we support it. It just come, you know, the complexities with the pandemic and the current health order. So that being said, I hope they have a good event.
Vice Mayor, if I may, I also understand that this is supposed to be kind of a family event, so then young people would understand what's going on and why this is important.
Correct. A lot of it is, in a, in a way, it's a great, it's a sad occasion, but a chance for the public to learn how to use public processes and to speak to their children about civic engagement and fighting for what you believe in.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Pappan? Councilwoman Pappan?
Sorry, unmuted. Excuse me. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do want to emphasize that the city council has been united in the efforts right now brought about by this tragedy and so many countless other ones that have evolved through time. Hopefully, we can all come together to take action for justice, equity, and compassion. I have firm belief in the city of Millbrae and our residents. I'm so glad the conversation and the efforts continue to bring about real change this time. I look forward to seeing people on Saturday in joining us and the city council who came together this morning and took a knee out in front of City Hall as well. That we understand the frustration and the need for change. And I think all of us are going to be working toward real change for once. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilwoman Oliva?
Sure. So the senseless death of George Floyd is obviously very tragic. And I want to send my deepest sympathies with the Floyd family and other families who understand and feel the same pain and grief. Our neighbors in our communities where we work and live across Millbrae, but across America should feel safe and feel free from any type of discrimination. And I thank you all to the council teams here, teammates here for coming together today. It was, it was very, very nice and very, I would say, very simple on what we demonstrated and hopes and in hopes that we could spread it throughout the community. And I think Saturday is a good example of hoping that the spread will continue. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Can we go to the public comments, please?
Okay, we have four items of public comment, and the first public comment is from Amy L. Hello, City Council. This is, this email is to affirm my strong support of Black Lives Matter. Standing for racial justice is an imperative. I will vote with my tax dollars to expand education of black history and racism in the USA in our schools. I will vote to eliminate participation of police PAC money in any campaigns. I also support any reforms that eliminate police extreme force and violence. Thank you, Amy. The next public comment is from Nathan Chan. I appreciate the city's proclamation in response to the murder of George Floyd, but the present moment calls for something much bolder. The proclamation should not shy away from calling what was done to George Floyd murder, which even other law enforcement officials have done. It also does not call out systematic racial profiling in law enforcement directly and the other lives it has cost, which is notable given Millbrae's own history. Two years ago, Chinado Okobi was killed by San Mateo Sheriff's deputies within our city's boundaries. At the time, I contacted the city council and then Councilmember Holliver acknowledged the tragedy and deferred to the district attorney conducting investigation. Then Mayor Pappan made a similar public acknowledgement at the October 2018 meeting. Since then, I have not seen any comments from the council, and last year District Attorney Wagstaff declined to press charges. If Millbrae condemns George Floyd's murder, it should also condemn Chinado Okobi's killing. If our city does not want repeats of either tragedy to occur here, we need to pass laws and ordinances with the goal of making that impossible. Many American cities are now banning the chokehold that killed Mr. Floyd. DA Wagstaff seemed to believe deputies did not violate county TASER policy in Mr. Okobi's killing, so he could not prosecute. These, those policies should be changed. The next time our police chief comes before the council to present, they should be asked, what changes have you made to avoid another George Floyd or Chinado Okobi? There is community support for more aggressive changes. This past Sunday, Justice for Chinado and Peninsula DSA organized a march from Cappuccino High School to the sheriff's office. At one point, the crowd of nearly 500 marched on El Camino. Now it's the city council's term, turn to effect change. Nathan Chan. The third comment is from Stephen Green. My public comment for items not appearing on the agenda is as follows. I applaud the city for their proclamation about the death of George Floyd. However, I would like to see the city do more. After the death of Chinado Okobi here in Millbrae in 2018, the San Mateo County Sheriff's Department made changes to their use of force policy and implemented implicit bias training. The ACLU of Northern California called these changes not enough and recommended adopting policies similar to San Francisco's TASER policy, banning the dangerous practice of discharging weapons at moving vehicles and further training in de-escalation techniques, especially with individuals suffering from mental health issues. I would like to see the city use their voice to seek coordination with San Carlos, Half Moon Bay, Portola Valley, Woodside, and the San San Mateo County Board of Supervisors in demanding revisions to the San Mateo County Sheriff's Training and Use of Force Policies to bring them into line with those advocated for by the ACLU. We are not powerless bystanders, and the same problems that exist in Minneapolis, Louisville, and Ferguson are here in Millbrae. We can do, we can and should do more than offer proclamations. We should always demand the best of those who wear the badge. Thank you, Stephen Green. And the final public comment item is from Anders Fung. In the wake of killing, in the wake of the killing of George Floyd, Millbrae neighbors have organized a Black Lives Matter event to bring our town together to bear witness to this tragedy and call for change with a unified voice. To those Millbrae residents who decide to join this event on Saturday, June 13th, from 12 to 1:30 for a peaceful, family-friendly protest, please ensure that proper social distancing is being practiced. Non-family members stay six feet apart with proper face coverings being worn at all times. Please also join me and my family to take a moment of silence for George Floyd and to call, and a call to stop census violence, racial inequity, and social injustice. Anders Fung. And that concludes the public comments for this item.
Okay, thank you very much. And I'm sure those are all, you know, discussions that we will be having as we, as we move forward through this tragedy. Yes, Councilwoman Pappan?
Yes, I'm glad to report, I do believe the governor just signed legislation permitting chokeholds in any way, shape, or form by law enforcement, so.
Prohibiting or?
Prohibiting them, prohibiting them. So that is a major step, but there's so much more to do. I just wanted to make sure that that was understood.
Okay, well, thank you very much. So let's move on to the next proclamation, and this is in honor of June as LGBTQ Pride Month. And we have with us today Crystal Cancino from the LGBTQ San Mateo County Commission. Would you like to say a few words?
Hi, this is actually Juliana Garcia. I'm covering for Crystal. She had to go to another city council meeting tonight, but she sends her regards. If it's already, I'd like to say a few words.
Yeah, and can, can we, maybe Tom, if you can stop sharing your screen so we can consider? Great.
Thank you. My name is Juliana Garcia. I'm a commissioner on the San Mateo County LGBTQ Commission. I'm really proud to accept the city of Millbrae's proclamation on behalf of our commission. Our purpose is to bring greater recognition and visibility to the LGBTQ plus community in San Mateo County. Over the past few months, our commission has invited all cities and towns in San Mateo County to formally recognize Pride Month, June. This visibility allows LGBTQ plus residents to know that they are seen and that they are important. By issuing this proclamation, the city of Millbrae is visibly, visibly demonstrating how important it is for LGBTQ youth, seniors, and those struggling with coming out to see their local government celebrate Pride Month. June is an extremely important month for the LGBTQ plus community. And this year in particular, June marks the 50th anniversary of foundational pride celebrations in cities like San Francisco and New York. It is also the five-year anniversary of the Supreme Court decision that legalized same-sex marriage. While we all have been preparing for our pride celebrations to look a little bit different this year, what we did not plan for is the pain and suffering that have occurred in the United States over the past few weeks. Although Pride Month is normally a time of unapologetically celebrating one's identity, marching in the streets to music of LGBTQ artists and boldly declaring love is love, it doesn't feel right to be celebrating anything now with all the hurt going on in the world, and in particular in the black community. This year, the LGBTQ community recognizes that it is more important than ever to be an ally to the black community. Pride Month celebrations actually have deep roots with protests and riots. The Compton Cafeteria riot occurred in August 1966, marking the beginning of transgender activism in San Francisco. This event was one of the first LGBTQ plus related riots in US history, preceding the more famous 1969 Stonewall riots in New York City. During Stonewall, black people like Marsha P. Johnson and so many others were drivers of that moment, which started to turn the tide for the LGBTQ community globally. It is important for us to continue to recognize and honor the LGBTQ plus community, the black community, and the intersectionality that brings these two groups together as we continue to fight for equality. Thank you so much to Mayor Holliver and the city of Millbrae for your allyship and support.
Okay, well, thank you very much, Ms. Garcia, for joining us this evening. I'm honored to be in support of the LGBTQ plus community, and we have raised the pride flag in front of City Hall in Millbrae. So happy to be a part of the celebration. Okay, any, let's see, comments from the council? Well, thank you very much for, for joining us this evening and happy to join in support. Okay, let's go on to the next proclamation. I'd like to honor Superintendent Vaughn Fabrosert of the Millbrae School District, who has served the district for the past 12 years in several positions and has been superintendent now for the past five years. I've been a tremendous community partner with the city and different civic groups around Millbrae. So we, you know, we're sad to see you go. We wish you the best in all your future endeavors. Vaughn, would you like to say a few words?
Sure, I'll unmute myself. I think I'm getting good at Zoom. I want to just give a shout out and a thank you first to Mayor Holliver and the city council. I have spent the last 12 years here, and you know, you don't stay in one place that long if you're not happy. You don't stay in one place that long if you don't feel part of a community. And so I want to thank the city council. I want to thank the community of Millbrae. There are three lessons learned with my partnership with city council. Number one, when a community comes together, change can happen. When a community comes together, progress can be made. And I know that we resort back to the parcel tax, but that's just a very small token. Just imagine, just imagine other things that we can do together. And, and my hope is that, that, that partnership continues. Number two, there were some council members that sat on our strategic planning team. Some takeaways from our planning phase was that we all matter. One of the key components for the mission, vision, and goal statement was that it doesn't matter if you're black, white, short, tall, you have to have a voice and we have to pay attention to those kiddos. And so that was extremely important to me. And then lastly, I've gotten to know many of you throughout the years. Ruben, you look even younger with your beard. Don't try to hide that, but I can personally say that I can, and you know, outside of your roles as city council members, I consider these friendships. And so I thank you for that. And I've had the best 12 years here. I wish Millbrae super, super success. And I, I, my hope is that that partnership still continues as, as we move forward. So thank you for this honor tonight, Mayor Holliver.
You're welcome very much. And, you know, we hope you, you continue to visit once you've left your, your post there. Let's see, Vice Mayor Schneider?
Thank you, Mayor. Vaughn, it's been a pleasure working with you. It was fun during the strategic plan. You serve very good coffee. I also want to say thank you for teaching me that new word kiddos. I noticed both you and Principal Lohan say the, say the same thing. You will be greatly missed. You made it really easy for us to work together. And I know you're hoping to spend more time with your family in the Midwest, but as the mayor said, please come visit. You are always welcome.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Councilwoman Oliva?
Vaughn, you, you are a winner in my eyes. I enjoyed every moment of every minute that you were in a room, that we were working on something together. And as you wish Millbrae the greatest of success, Vaughn, I wish you the greatest of success. So keep us posted, what's, what's going to be next.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, Councilman Lee? Councilman Lee?
You're muted. Muted.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Vaughn, I'm going to miss you a lot too. I feel like we grew up together, my, my, watching my kid grow in that school district under your leadership. And, and all the projects we've, we've done, you've been, not only have you been very competent, very effective, but you also have a personality that motivate, motivated the community. And you were very smart at it, and you're very passionate about it. You also have a few things that you could put in your hat, the three tries of getting the parcel tax passed. It was passed under your, under your watch. You were there when, when the community center burned down. You opened the doors to the facilities and helped out the city. And then you also brought in many, many innovative things like emotional learning for children. So I think that you really left your mark here in Millbrae. And I hope you think, know that this is almost your second home away from home, and we hope that you come to visit. Thank you, Vaughn. You really, you really touched my life and the children's lives, my kids' lives. Thank you again.
Thank you, Wayne.
And Councilwoman Pappan?
Vaughn, how could you? No, how could you leave us? Thank you so much for all the work you've done here over the last 12 years and working with the council and really expanding the horizons for every student here, making them more accepting of one another and the community as a whole. You have really brought the community together. You will be greatly missed. So leave us your forwarding number so we can call if anything goes wrong. But we wish you all the very, very best. Thank you so much for all you've done.
Thank you, Councilmember Pappans.
All right, well, thank you very much, Vaughn. You know, again, we're sad to see you go, but accomplished so much here at the district and really helped so many, so many kids, so many families, and really this community. We're going to miss you. I don't know, you, you've got a lot of, a lot left in your career, and I wish you all the best in your future endeavors. And I know you have, you know, the spirit and the intellect and the, the personality to make it happen and that you'll succeed at anything you go forward to from, from here. So wish you the best and thank you very much for, for joining us this evening.
Mr. Mayor, I noticed that there are a few counts, a few trustees on, on this. You know, maybe we can hear from them if that's okay. I don't mean to put you in the spot, but if you'd like to say a few words, that'd be great.
Yes, I would love to say something. Hi Vaughn, remember me? I have to echo Gina's comment when she said, how could you? I mean, so many years as teachers together, principals together, on the board together. And I just want to say that I have never worked with an individual who truly shows his heart in everything he does. He's an amazing listener. His door is always open. And I have learned so much from you, Vaughn, and I know I'm not going to lose track of you because I have your personal information. And I will bug you and bug you because I love you so much and just it's hard for me to express everything I'm feeling right now, but you will truly be missed and we wish you all the best. So thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, trustee Ferrario.
And it looks like we also have trustee Musa on the line as well.
I'm here. Hey Vaughn, hi everyone. You know, um, you know, I'm trying to hide my face, but anyway. Yeah, we are with, we're very sad to see him go. He's been with us for a long time. We've done so much together. I've met him 10 years ago when I was PTA president at Spring Valley, and Vaughn came in as principal, and we worked our way up to this point. And it's been a pleasure working with you and I can't list the list of things that we've done, and there's so much more for us to do, but you left us way too early. But anyway, you'll be missed, and you always, you are always, always welcome to come back and volunteer. We always, we're always looking for volunteers. And so, yeah. We, but you know, right now Vaughn is transitioning, working with our new superintendent, Debbie French. You'll be meeting her pretty soon and, and hopefully we'll continue the same work Vaughn started and move, keep moving forward with the city council as well. And I saw Captain Paul Kunkel here. And so, yeah, we just want to continue the relationship that we have with the city and the, the police department here in Millbrae. So we, you will be missed very much, Vaughn, but we do wish you the best. So, yeah.
Trustee Musa, thank you.
Okay, well, thank you very much for joining us this evening and.
Hey, Mr. Mayor, if I?
Yes, yes, Tom, yes.
I was trying to raise my hand, but for some reason, every time I'm around somebody, they have trouble raising my hand. And Vaughn, I just can't get over how good your hair looks during this.
shelter in place. You're going to have to give me your secrets, but from a city manager's point of view, having a very strong relationship with a superintendent is key to a healthy community. And you have made me feel welcome from the day I started. A great open communication. And I know you've done tremendous work for this community. And as everybody said, you will be missed. I will miss you. I will miss our relationship. As everyone said, we are here for you. And I know you continue to have a bright future ahead of you. But I have myself, the city staff, you know, Chief Kunkel, Mackenzie Brady, Key Lim, everyone here. We've really enjoyed working with you and the partnership has been fantastic. And I thank you very, very much for your leadership. So good luck and look forward to continuing our, our relationship. So thank you.
Thank you, Tom. It means a lot. Thank you.
Very well said. All right. Well, thank you very much, Vaughn. And we wish you the, all the best in, in your future. All right, let's go back to Mr. Williams with the agenda overview and staff briefing. Tom. Mr. Williams.
Sorry about that, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. Thank you. Go back to the agenda here for my staff briefing. I would like to just real quick, say a big thank you to the Millbrae community for continuing to adhere to the shelter in place, the social distancing. When I'm out and about in the community, everyone's masked and, and the six feet minimum separation with the lines out in front of our grocery stores. And throughout our downtown, I would just like to say thank you to the community for doing a great job adhering to the shelter in place and, and the protocols from our health officer. As you know, things continue to change. It's very fluid. The shelter in place guidelines were updated to allow summer camp. Our summer camp enrollment is currently in session or it's going on. Summer camp starts this Monday, June 15th. So anyone interested, please log on to our website. You can sign up through our recreation department page that's on the city of Millbrae's website. Currently, we have 14 camp attendees signed up. So that's enough for two classes. The enrollment for each camp is a maximum of 12 children. And based on the, the order and the protocols, we have to maintain a minimum of at least a three week long period camp. So our enrollment will be maximum of 12 children per camp, a minimum of three weeks in our enrollment. So any parents that are interested, it's very safe. We're looking forward to having a great summer camp. And please, if you're interested, enroll on our recreation website. So currently on the screen, just real quick, there are currently 2,437 total cases in San Mateo County, a total of 93 deaths specifically in terms of the number of people that are hospitalized, the ICU beds, ventilators, surge beds. The county continues to do a fantastic job in, in the logistics and making sure that our resources are available for those people that need it. The rate of, the testing has increased significantly and the percentage of positive, positive percentage of our population continues to go down actually as, as the testing increases. But for the city of Millbrae specifically, we have, hold on a second. We have over 100 cases. I can't see it. Hold on for a second on my. So in the city of Millbrae, we have a total of 116 cases. And I know there's been a lot of communication around, surrounding that number of cases. And that's because the county has a program that they are testing all of the long-term care facilities. And they have done that in the city of Millbrae. And, and for that reason, we've seen a increase in the number of cases. And, and I think that we will continue to see that community by community as the county makes their rounds to long-term care facilities. So that's an overview, Mr. Mayor, of where we are currently with the virus. Again, the shelter in place order allows summer camps. We're ready to commence on the 15th. There's still enrollment that's, opportunities that are available for parents. So please take a look at our website.
Mr. Williams, can you also maybe give a, a quick overview of the, the safety precautions that have been taken around the nursing homes and senior care facilities with the outbreaks?
Yes, so one facility in particular had a high increase of positive test cases. And so both the county health office as well as state health office came in and assisted that particular business and immediately came in and took control of the situation and put all the protocols in place to ensure that there was no spread of the virus outside of the care facility. So that's a good point, Mr. Mayor. I was extremely impressed with how quickly the county health office, as well as the California State Health Office came in to assist that particular business and ensure the safety of the community. So with that, Mr. Mayor, that concludes my presentation. We'll move to the agenda. So then there's calendar of events, reports of bills and claims on the agenda, approval of the meeting minutes for the regular meeting of May 12th, 2020, as well as the regular meeting of May 26th, 2020. There are no oral reports from city committee or commission chairs this evening. We then move to public comment and that's available for any member of the public to address the City Council on any item not on the agenda. Speakers are limited to three minutes. Then we move to the consent calendar, item number five, which is to consider a resolution of the Millbrae City Council establishing the appropriations limit for our fiscal year 2021 budget. Item number six is an ordinance adding Article 31 of Development Impact Fees to Title 10, Chapter 10.05 of the Millbrae Municipal Code. This is a second reading of the ordinance. Item number seven is to consider a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an amendment to the agreement with the County of San Mateo Animal Control Services to extend the agreement for one year. Item number eight are reappointments to city commissions and committees. Item number nine is to consider approval of an emergency ordinance extending the moratorium on evictions for non-payment of rent by small commercial tenants impacted by the COVID-19 pandemic. We have one public hearing item tonight. That's item number 10. That's to consider a resolution for adopting the actual development impact fees for general government facilities, recreation facilities, public safety, park acquisition and facilities and mobility infrastructure. Moving on to item number 11, under existing business, the item is to consider a resolution of the Millbrae City Council appropriating operating and capital budgets for fiscal year 2020 and 2021. Item number 12, under new business, is to consider an urgency ordinance of the city of Millbrae regarding the use of property for outdoor dining. There is, there are two items for action under item 12. One is an urgency, an urgency ordinance, and the other is a resolution implementing that ordinance. After the last new business item, there's council comments and then move to adjourn. So that concludes the overview of tonight's calendar, Mr. Mayor.
Ruben, you're muted.
Sorry, Councilman Lee.
Yeah, thank you. I just have a, just want to point out that the, even though the county is opening up a little bit more in Phase 1 and the states were opening up, reports are that COVID-19 is still in an increase. So, and you're asking why are we opening up if it's increasing? It's because the health department has, has decided that keeping facilities closed for this long is becoming counterproductive. And people aren't going to, are, are, are going to, not going to follow the proper protocols to keep each other safe. So this is a controlled method of opening up and also providing services that people critically need. But you still need to be very, very vigilant, very mass and also appearing to social distancing, distancing thing. And also get tested with the Verilent or Verity.com.
Verily.
Verily.com, thank you.
Project Baseline.com.
Yeah, go to projectbaseline.com and get tested. It's free. It's our way of figuring out and tracing infections. So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilwoman Pappen.
When we get to item seven, I'd like to pull it, please.
Thank you. Yes, Vice Mayor Schneider. Vice Mayor Schneider.
Sorry, I had meant to raise, lower my hand.
Okay. All right, thank you.
To get the camera working, I have to sit farther away.
Okay. All right, let's move on to the approval of minutes. We have two meetings, meetings of May 12th, 2020 and May 26th, 2020. Do we have a, a motion and a second?
A second.
Okay, a motion from Vice Mayor Schneider and a second from Councilman Lee. Can we do a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Councilmember Lee.
Aye.
Councilmember Pappen.
Aye.
Councilmember Oliva.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Schneider.
Aye.
Mayor Oliver.
Hi.
The minutes for the May 12th and May 26th council meetings are unanimously approved.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have public communication. This is the opportunity for members of the public to speak on any item that is not on this evening's agenda. Public comments were submitted by email in advance of the meeting. And the comments do not necessarily reflect the views of the council or the views of the public of Millbrae as a whole. So Ms. Lewis, can you read any general public comments?
Yes, we have three public comment items. The.
Sorry, Tom, can you stop sharing your screen? Okay, great, thank you.
The first public comment item is from Justin Louis. Hello, I live on the corner of Aviador and Hillcrest in the Bayside Manor neighborhood. There are a lot of instances of people dumping their trash and furniture on an open lot on that intersection. Can you guys look into adding a security camera to help prevent this from happening? A camera mounted on the green light pole would be ideal to get the best coverage. Thanks, Justin. The next item of public comment is from Lou Sandrini. Mayor and council members, recently I told you of an incident when city manager Williams's conduct was grossly immature and unprofessional. Communications with you, and in some cases just the mayor, sought accountability. Inexplicably, Mr. Williams has not been held accountable. Apparently emboldened by not being held accountable then, he has gone, he has once again acted unprofessionally, disrespectful of his responsibilities and really quite childish. Over two months ago, May 1st, I submitted a Public Records Act request for the date of a stop sign warrant Mr. Williams had sent me, March 11th. The warrant was not dated. In addition, I requested to see a warrant peer review. I was told had that, had been prepared. The Records Act requires a response by May 11th. On that date, the city says they have responsive documents in possession, custody and control. However, as a result of the virus-related California, virus-related California executive order, there will be a delay in collecting the documents. What? Get serious. Delayed in collecting the undated warrant Mr. Williams sent me months ago and a single-page peer review the city received April 24th. Interestingly, two days before that, April 22nd, Mayor Oliver told me the peer review was done. Next, they say document production will not take place before May 25th. On May 26th, I am told it will now be June 9th. On June 8th, I get the one-page peer review and the same stop sign warrant I got months ago. This is 30 days beyond the required date. There is no valid executive order or Record Act reason for this long delay. By the way, invoking the executive order for this unreasonable delay is a real stretch. In addition to being inexcusably late, the reply is not responsive to my request. The warrant remains undated. The date is the only thing I requested. The thinking behind how my request was handled is transparent. It appears personal, contrary to any permissible action of a mature and responsible public official. That cannot be, that cannot be allowed. Tom Williams's conduct again is unprofessional, disrespectful and rather childish. He must be trying to tell me, see, I can do whatever I wish and that's just too bad for you. Shame on Tom and shame on Mayor Oliver if he doesn't hold Tom accountable and get me a responsive Record Act reply. Most likely, the only reason I got the response yesterday is because Mr. Williams figured I would address you tonight. Too bad the reply was not responsive and so late. What a shame, sad Lou Sandrini. And the final item of public comment is from Marge Colapietro. Thank you, Mayor, for the clear directive you gave at the May 26th council meeting. It was reported in the Daily Journal. Looking ahead, Mayor Oliver said he was more focused on assuring Millbrae continue, continues repairing its local economy to rebound. To that end, he called for advancing development projects which could bolster the city's budget. There are things we can do for economic development that will pay dividends down the road. Three years ago, 2017, Calvano Development submitted a planning application to the city. Mid-June of 2019, city council had a public study session to introduce his development proposal. Councilmembers and members of the public continued to express liking the project. Again, three years ago, 2017, Anton Developers El Rancho submitted an application for a development proposal. There were a few revisions. A couple of weeks ago, on May 18th, 2020, the Planning Commission held a public study session for the project. Planning commissioners expressed liking the project. Councilmember Pappen previously commented, while we may not agree on every aspect of every project that comes before us, we must come together and not become stagnant as to miss out on an opportunity that will help us become better than we are today. Councilmember Oliver also said carefully planned development near the Transit Center and El Camino Real is necessary to generate revenue. But we also must continue to listen to the community so projects provide economic prosperity to the city. I know you have a freeze on hiring. However, remember the developers pay the bills for their project. You just raised the fees. Please respectfully direct the city manager to expeditiously hire one or two city project managers to focus on these two wonderful proposals that we know council favors. Also, please revise your 2021 priority number one goal to groundbreaking for above two developments in and around the transit hub prior to spring 2021. Delays have been long enough. Loss of revenue has been long enough. Please do your job respectfully, Marge. And that concludes the public comments.
Thank you very much, Ms. Lewis. Okay, let's move on to the.
Vice Mayor.
Yes, Councilwoman Pappen.
I apologize, sir. A couple of those issues, can we possibly put on the future agendas? Mr. Sandrini's issue and also can we get an update as to where we are on some of the approved developments? Just a consideration, if you wouldn't mind, Mr. Mayor.
Approved developments or potential?
Yeah, approved and possibly, excuse me, my chair's a little far away here. I'm rolling. And possibly future developments. It is part of our recovery and I think important. So I'm not sure how we would shape that, but I ask for your consideration at a future meeting.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Oliva.
Yes, Mayor, and right along those lines, looking towards recovery and looking how important the developers could, could be in the recovery to us. Is it, would it be possible, maybe on the agenda, if we could put together a subcommittee that might be able to do exactly what Councilmember Pappen just suggested? To look at the updates and the pros and cons to maybe do the work and present to the other council members?
Okay, well, this isn't, this isn't really the opportunity to, to address items, not on the agenda for the council, but that's something we can take into consideration.
Well, it's not really, it's not really an item that's not, not, not on the agenda. We're talking about recovery and we're talking about our, our recovery. And I think it fits. our recovery and I think it fits well to the situation. I would, I would hope that maybe you can get that on the agenda for us.
We can consider that. Okay, let's move on now to the consent calendar. We have Councilwoman woman Pappen has requested to remove item number seven. So we have items five, six, eight and nine. Do we have a motion?
I'll make your post in the approved consent calendar, except for item seven.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion from Councilman Lee and a second from Councilwoman Oliva. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Lee.
Aye.
Councilmember Pappen.
Aye.
Councilmember Oliva.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Schneider.
Aye.
Mayor Holliver.
Hi.
Okay, consent calendar items five, seven, eight and nine are unanimously approved.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Pappen, did you have a comment or question about item seven?
I do. Thank you very much. Oh, my own? Yes, I'm on. Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Actually, if we could get somewhat of a briefing to start with here, this is the resolution authorizing the city manager to execute the amendment to the agreement with the county. I think we have a typo on the minutes, but or on the agenda of San Mateo for animal control services. Can we get a very short briefing on the kind of money that this entails and then I'll have a question?
So just very briefly, the item before you is it has been brought before you because the county is seeking a one year extension in the current agreement through 2021 because it is conducting a review of the services provided by the Peninsula Humane Society. And in order to conduct their review, they are requesting that the cities, all cities in the county extend this agreement for one more year. The city's portion of what is paid for animal control services is approximately $160,000. So we pay 2.26% of the share of the total cost of of the services.
With that said, Mr. Mayor, I would like consideration made here. Will we pay $160,000 to get into a contract with the county who then gets into a contract with the San Mateo County Humane Society, SPCA? There are innate problems with how they treat their staff, the lack of actually air conditioned vans to carry the animals in humanely, including the staff, and they have an executive over there who makes over $400,000. So what percentage of our funding or the agreement that the county gets into with the SPCA is actually being spent validly on the employees who I understand are underpaid at best and also the safety and security of the animals moving forward here. If there's one person over there who's making $400,000, I'm finding this problematic. What what are we paying for and what does the county pay for? So I'm not sure how we proceed, but there are definitely issues here that have been going on for years now that need to be addressed. And I don't know how we send a message to the county along those lines. If anybody couldn't help me, but I think we need to really protect the employees and the animals on top of somebody getting just an enormous salary.
There was some additional information that was provided by the county that they are releasing an RFP in the fall. And after that, they would be looking at a new contract. And so within that new contract, what they're saying is that they would try to include language that would exclude the salary of the president of the Humane Society. But this is under negotiation. And just as one other comment, I do want to let you know that I did receive a public comment for this item as well. So I wanted to make that known also.
Can we hear from the public comment, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, see, Vice Mayor Schneider also has her hand up, so.
Thank you. Several years ago, I went down and walked with the employees over health and safety conditions that they were under. And I brought this up with the city manager over the weekend and I want to thank staff for getting an answer. At the time, several years ago, and who knew that animal control officers need to have a bulletproof vest, but they do go into properties where there are angry humans regarding what's happening to their animals or how they've been treating their animals. And I'm pleased to hear and the city manager could could correct me if I've got any of this wrong, but the Humane Society is now covering the cost for their employees' personal protection devices, which are not masks. It's bulletproof vests, it's other equipment to keep them safe from humans and animals. So that's one step in the right direction. But I agree with Councilwoman Pappen. I would like to see a list of things to make sure that in the new contract or in the RFP that they special specify that all employees have a safe working environment, that they're getting a living wage. And then today I heard that they had, they obviously have problems during COVID because it's a volunteer run operation. So the kitty adoption area has been shut down. I understand all of that in the time of COVID, but they provide such an important function. We need to make sure that they are working to protect animals during COVID and any other pandemic that we may have in the future. And I'd like to see that in the the language for the RFP. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Ms. Ms. Lewis, is there a any deadline that this would have to be approved by?
So, yes.
No, we really don't have any, we don't really have a choice. This is the only provider. We, you know, it wouldn't make sense economically to find or run provider.
This, um, this item will be brought forward to the Board of Supervisors at their June 18th meeting. And so we have been asked to, you know, bring this forward prior to it going to the the Board of Supervisors for final approval.
Okay, is there any type of a process for commenting on these issues either in the RFP process? How would that work?
I would have to reach out to the staff from that's we're working with at the county and get an answer for you on that. I believe that we would be able to send comments in, but I would have to to double check that.
All right, so Councilwoman Oliva.
Yes, Mayor, right, right along that same, that same realm of thoughts. What would happen if we did not pass this tonight?
Um, I think we would be one of the few cities that do not. And I still think that, and I'd have to check with with the agreement itself, but I believe there's a provision in there that says if, and it may just be for terminating, but I think if we don't approve this, I think we're still going to be on the hook for, you know, our prorated, you know, amount that that we are supposed to pay for these services.
So we could agree to disagree. If we didn't sign it, they'll get services and we'd still have to pay. But we wouldn't be celebrating their services. Is that correct?
Um, I believe it is, yes.
Connor, did you have a comment on that?
I'd say we'd have to look, I don't have the contract in front of me. I think if 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 you were to put this over, you might hold up them them signing it. I'm not sure that'd be catastrophic, but if you don't sign it at all, that 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 certainly puts us in an awkward position because we really don't have any option to receive the services.
So that that's, I think that listening from the other two council members, which I would agree. How do we make them feel awkward and not us?
Send them a letter?
Well, I, I, I think that the, if I may, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I think that the, that the county has identified, you know, significant shortcomings with their current contract. And as Angela had mentioned, they're preparing and will be releasing an RFP early this fall. And I, I think that, you know, that the purpose of that is to make sure that we don't lose any service delivery. I would think that if we didn't sign the contract during the amount of time that we don't have a contract, we just would not be receiving the service.
I don't think that's.
Yeah, no question. You'd say they mentioned prorate. Does anybody have I any idea? Have we figured out how much we spend in their services every year, what the needs are here? I, granted, we have wildlife and we have domestic life and a lot of needs for this, but how much money is actually do they expend here?
Yeah, their budget, their budget is generated on on fines. I mean, every time.
Having paid one, my dog got out once. I had to bail her out.
I've paid myself, but I think that, Tom, city manager, Tom, I, I think that the subject matter is not the service of the employees so much, the vans and and, you know, when we need them, we need them, there's no doubt. But the subjects come up each and every time that we've had this contract in front of us. I mean, we got a CEO of Peninsula Humane Society making $400,000.
Over that.
And it's, it's, I don't know, I don't, I've tried to get him on the phone because I've had issue with them and I haven't been able to. So I think that, so Michael, what I think what what I'm trying to say is like, I don't, I don't want to look awkward. I like to play as a team player and I don't want to dismiss them. I find their value in what they do in many ways, but I think that our point needs to be made that let them be awkward and let them say, what the heck, Millbury? And we can say, well, this is it. And it's been headlines before. It's been in the paper 15 years ago and they did nothing about it.
Okay, let's hear the public comment about this item.
Yeah, Miss Ma, if I misspoke, I didn't mean to. I mean, I think the issues are with management and and the and and the management of the organization, not the, you know, kind of boots on the ground service delivered from the employees.
Correct. And just, I did in the interim, find a very small blurb about the nonpayment or failing to pay its percentage. So I can read that to you from the amendment here. It says, in the event any city fails to pay its percentage share as set forth in this agreement and exhibit B, every other city shall promptly pay its proportionate share of cost of the nonpayment unless and until the county is able to recover to the nonpayment from the late or nonpaying city. That's what I found just in a brief review of the paperwork here. Mayor, would you like me to go ahead and read the public comment?
Yes, please.
Okay, the public comment is from Mike Lego Marcino. Good evening. I hope this finds everyone safe and well. This is Mike Lego Marcino, President of Teamsters Local 856 and the representative for the Peninsula Humane Society. I would like to respectfully ask that the council does not approve this amendment until there is sufficient time for public comment. Thank you for your time and consideration on this matter.
Okay, thank you. So my, my initial thoughts here is that or that the, there are some issues with, you know, the management with labor relations and with animal welfare. And those are critical issues and it sounds like they really have not been dealt with much over the last few years. I would say, however, you know, instead of holding this contract up since it's only for one year, we communicate that with the county through the RFP process and hopefully with the RFP process, they can seek to address, seek to improve some standards from the contractor and guarantee better performance here. But I don't think, you know, being the one city that holds this up is is going to be what is going to make a difference here. I think if anything, it makes us look bad like we're not the team player.
Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Would that be formal? I believe we should be formalizing a letter to the county as to our specific objections here. I understand that the staff over there is comparatively significantly underpaid and we would like to see some final action in the right direction. Because as Councilmember Oliva pointed out, we've been in this position before and unless we actually send a letter clearly stating our objections, I, I'm just afraid that management will continue to do what they do and we, we're running into management problems on the parts. Just management shouldn't be allowed to do certain things. So let's, I think we should be clear in a record letter to them if we decide to continue. If we vote on it tonight and don't continue it. Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes. Yes, Vice Mayor Schneider.
There was two of the, one of the thing that I, when I read through the contract that I had a question for. And it's the fact that animal licensing is handled by a company outside the state of California. Maybe I've heard a couple of our restaurants saying maybe business is going to bounce back, but we have severe unemployment here. I'd like to see that we try to use California based companies, local based companies before we outsource to another state. And I pay a couple of animal licensing fees, so I, it bugs me each time I spend not a lot of money, but send it out of state. But the Humane Society did work with us during the disaster preparedness day. They've done some really good things. So I don't want to, I appreciate when city manager said it's not staff as much, but it's us standing up for the fact that they're not getting paid enough. And they weren't getting their personal protection devices and perhaps the the air conditioning boat in the vehicles for the animals being picked up and at the facilities. And I haven't been to the new facility down by the the bay yet, but I like the idea of a letter. I am hesitant to not approve it tonight. We've got an awful lot on our plate, as does the county with everything else going on. But I also know that there is at least one other city and at least one other councilman very actively involved in this. And maybe we can reach out to a couple of the other cities. I'm happy to reach out to the one that I know of and see how collectively we can write a letter saying, we're letting you go this year, but next year, this is what we expect to see.
Yeah, so I'm looking at the email right now that was Ms. Lewis had forwarded from Lori Morton Bezel at the county and they are saying that in the RFP process, they will include both county and city representatives. Millbury would like to have someone included, please let me know and I will include that person in the meetings. So as we go forward, we can, we can appoint one of our council members to serve on the RFP committee. I'm going to go ahead and make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Lee.
Aye.
Councilmember Pappen.
I'm going to abstain.
Councilmember Oliva.
No, and I did, I had my hand raised this entire time, Mayor, and it was just ignored.
Oh, I'm sorry. Would you like to make your comment? Sorry about that, Ms. Councilwoman Oliva.
I'm going to vote no, but I, it's, it's already the motion and second's been made. The, it's not time for comment.
I'll allow you to comment if you if you'd like.
Well, you're, you commented that that we might as well be team players and we should go ahead and go right now and so that we're not holding this up. And that is very, that's contrary to what our, what Angela had read specifically saying that the county will have to come up with the money. Well, to me, that is no better solution to be heard with saying, hey, look, there's, there's a problem here. Here's a 911. Millbury, we, we are team players. We're always team players. I'm, I'm, I'm 100% always going to go with the team. But when you have to stand up for something that is not correct and we are have experienced abuse in our community, in our, in our United States of America, and we're allowing it to happen to the people in our backyard and to our animals. So I'm going to vote no, and we are not going to stop the SPCA from functioning. And Councilmember Pappen should be applauded for bringing this up. I wanted to bring it up. We, we've brought it up numerous times while I served council and we've taken the stance and we said, well, let's just let's be the team. Let's be the A-team. And I'm voting no.
Thank you very much.
Shall I continue?
Shall, shall we start again with the with the roll call? Just start from from the beginning again.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Connor.
Just, yeah, I've had a chance now to look at the agreement. The, there is a provision that says if we want to terminate the agreement, we need to do so by December 31st of the prior year. So we really don't have the ability to terminate this. I mean, essentially be putting ourselves in breach and still be responsible for the, for the obligation. I mean, essentially be putting ourselves in breach and still be responsible for the, for the obligation. So um, you know, I think the city would be well, well advised to uh state, and it has, state the objections that it has and make those clear. But I, I think there's a established process to uh unwind this and uh it, it's, it, you can understand why in terms of having a contractor on board uh and being able to replace the services. So um I think it would, I, I would advise not terminating this or not essentially refusing to extend it. Um, which I think it would, rather than just express our, our, I, I think it would be the, just as, uh, have the same effect uh ultimately, if we simply ex- express our concerns, uh, go ahead and uh adopt the amendment and uh deal, you know, we can think about exiting the agreement as of the thirty first of this year uh if we're not comfortable with how the RFP process is proceeding.
So where are we voting?
We're voting to extend the agreement for one year. Um, but it's.
But we have to, is what, what I just heard.
Let's do the roll call vote uh once again.
Question? I'm, I'm sorry. This is an agreement that went into effect in December. We're on, we're in the middle of the year, June, voting for it. I mean, how is this, shouldn't this, I mean, shouldn't we be voting on this in December or January for a full year?
Mayor?
It doesn't.
It, it runs, it runs fiscal year. So it, it expires uh June thirtieth. That it has a notice term to say if you're going to get out of it, you have to give notice by December thirty first of the year before you would get out of it.
I see.
Okay. We have a motion and a second on the table. Um, I'd like to call the question and, and uh do a roll call once again.
I'm sorry.
Okay, Councilman Lee, sure.
I'm sorry, I missed it. So in other words, if we said no, nothing would happen basically or still go through um except for next year, then we have until December to make a choice again, right?
Yes.
No. Oh, I'm sorry, Mayor.
Could schedule that, yes.
Okay, I, I, I'm going to change my vote then to, to send a message. No.
Shall I? Shall I start the roll call, Mayor?
Yes, let's do a roll call once again.
Okay. Uh, Councilmember Lee?
No.
Councilmember Papin?
Abstain.
Councilmember Oliva?
No.
Uh, Vice Mayor Schneider?
Yowch. Um, I would prefer to see this come back to us in two weeks. Yes.
And um Mayor Holibur?
Aye.
Okay, um.
So it fails.
So the motion fails.
Yes.
Um, so I, I, you know, I guess it'll go to the board and they, we can tell them, you know, it was not approved by Millbrae and um express some of the issues that were raised here.
Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I, I think detailing the issues that were raised is very important. We're still going to be accountable to the contract. I get that. Um, but I would also like to add to our list um that goes to the county is that, yeah, writing a letter to Texas for your dog license or your cat license, that's something that should be brought home um to California. So if we could add that into our list of disclosures, I would appreciate that.
I have a feeling that, you know, there's a limited number of vendors that, that do animal licensing and that's probably the best rate that they have. Um, but so I, I don't know, Council, Councilwoman Papin and Councilwoman Oliva, if you're interested, perhaps um, you know, you could, we can appoint you as sort of an ad hoc subcommittee to um come up with a, a, a letter or some type of comment um to the Board of Supervisors before they vote at their next council meeting. I know they're, they're, sorry, their next uh board meeting. Um, it sounds like there would only be a few days uh to do so. Um, but to raise some of the concerns that were, that came up here. Yes, Vice Mayor Schneider?
If, if you create that subcommittee, the, that would, I wouldn't be able to reach out to the elected official that I know is also working on this in favor of animal and human rights because I wouldn't be able to communicate with the two of them. Could we, I guess I could funnel it through to staff, but that's really gray area.
Yeah, um. That's a good question. I mean, I, 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 I think, you know, Councilman Papin and Councilwoman Oliva raised the strongest objections here and I would feel um comfortable allowing you to, to speak on behalf of the council uh to the board. I, I, I would imagine it would, you know, that whatever the letter would, would come from the subcommittee and not necessarily from the council as a whole, since the council would not have the opportunity to review uh and approve of, of the, the letter or whatever the communication is.
Yeah, that's what I'm, that would be my question before I would say, yes, it would be like, is it, is it my voice or our voice? Because we have a, we have a, a.
It can, it can be, it can be from we, signed as uh Councilwoman Oliva and Councilwoman Papin and you know, uh, don't say that it's on behalf of the city council, but just issues that were raised at the, at the June ninth councilment meeting.
Mayor, I, I actually would disagree with that, not because it's, would be coming from two other council members, but I agree with them. I mean, I walked the picket line two years ago because they weren't getting, I think they were getting twelve dollars an hour and had to pay for their own uniforms and a bunch of other, and shoes and, and everything else out of it. The employees at different classes are not getting treated like human beings. So I agree with the work in changing that. And that could be stipulated in the RFP that, you know, the base entry level has to be at such a, such a rate and things like that. And it has to be a prevailing wage for the, the area, that personal protection equipment has to be around, that the trucks need to be there and, and however they're handling volunteers and staff in the facilities can be X, Y, Z. I prefer to see the letter come from us, just like with high-speed rail. I, I don't think any of us want to see the Humane, the Peninsula Humane Society different from the SPCA. Um, we want to see them change and it should come from all five of us.
Okay. I, I mean, I, I think, I think in the long term, in terms of the RFP, we can do that. Um, it sounds like the board is going to be voting on this.
That's true.
By June eighteenth. So, and we, we do not meet before then. So I would recommend having it sent by the subcommittee. And, you know, with.
Okay, for that time. But then can we continue to work on a letter for the RFP?
Yes. And, and we can have a representative on the RFP committee or whatever this group is that will be uh helping to put together the RFP. Uh, so we, we can have a representative uh on the committee at that time.
Okay.
We'll stand. Okay, so would the two of you be interested in, in doing that? It would have to be in the next handful of days?
You know, you up for it?
Yeah, I think we can do it.
Okay.
And Miss, staff will provide support obviously to the, uh, to the ad hoc subcommittee because there's, there's some other recommendations that I have in there as well as normalizing the, the agreement to a fiscal year because it's almost impossible for cities.
If Tom is speaking, I lost him.
It, it is on, based on a fiscal year, correct?
So.
Yeah.
What I'm saying is. Yeah, but I, but, but you have to provide, you know, as, as the attorney said, um, by the end of the calendar year, which only gives you six months to make a determination. So, you know, so, so things in the contract that sounds like they could be improved for cities. Uh, so it, it meets your needs and the needs of the city fiscally, rather than having to get into a contract, cancel it in, in December of the year and move six months into planning your budget, your fiscal year. That, that seems like there could be, you know, some, some changes to the contract terms itself that um I, I would be interested in. So um we'll provide full staff support to the ad hoc committee and work qu- quickly with them.
Okay.
I think we'll be hearing from our supervisor too. So we can, but we, we sent a message tonight and that's, thank you.
Very good. Thank you very much. Okay, let's move on to item number ten. This is the public hearing. Uh, resolution adopting the development impact fees for the general government facilities, recreation facilities, public safety, park acquisition and facilities and mobility infrastructure. Um, so we are opening the public hearing and can we have a presentation?
Miss Mayor, I'd like to introduce Mr. Keelim, uh, Public Works Director, but interim Community Development Director for Staff Presentation.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. Keelim here. I will um share my screen right now. So tonight, uh, we have in front of you, um, Millbrae City Council is a resolution adopting a citywide development impact fees. So at the last council meeting on May twenty-six, twenty twenty, uh, Harrison Associate Nick Crawl and Megan Quinn, who are also present at the council meeting, what the council to the mitigation development impact fees. And also, uh, I want to just briefly talk about the AB sixteen hundred mitigation fee act, also known as AB sixteen hundred, uh, it specified that new development only pays for deficiencies of capital costs and it has to be based on a rational nexus study, which we have completed, which is what we call the development impact fee study report that you have seen. And also the impact fee is a one-time fee to pay for new development capital and they are not to be used up for ongoing efficiency. And also lastly, the impact we require that we uh, we uh uh completed annual report and also every five years or so, we have to look at our impact fees uh next to study and do any unnecessary update as required. So just a brief histories on, on how we get here tonight. On May twenty-six, city council conducted a public hearing and entities and ordinance and also with the first reading on May twenty-six. So the ordinance is actually a framework imposing impact. The, and it does not specify how much impact fee will be. It will be um specified on the resolution that is before the council tonight. So also on tonight, council meeting, June nine, twenty twenty, council with the second reading and enacted an ordinance introducing the citywide impact. So the ordinance will be effective thirty days after tonight on July eight, twenty twenty. So the resolution, uh, the resolution tonight uh will actually, if adopted by the city council, be effective sixty days after tonight on August eight, twenty twenty. So a quick overview of the uh impact fee. So just take a look on the table, the writing column detail the total impact fee based on the land use, land use category for single-family home. They are approximately sixty-four thousand seven hundred dollars per rooftop. For multi-family home, they are forty-seven thousand three hundred and thirty-eight uh dollar per dwelling unit. For all non-residential development, for commercial, they will be based on one thousand buildings square feet. So for commercial, it will be eight thousand four hundred and eighty-eight dollar per one thousand square feet. For offices, it will be four thousand two hundred and ninety-one dollar per one thousand square feet. And for all industrial land use, it will be one thousand four hundred and fifty-two dollar per one thousand square feet. And lastly, for the hotel category, it will be one thousand five hundred and ninety-four dollar per room key. So just to keep you up to date, uh, we are proceeding with the next phase of the development impact fee will be to looking at our CFD and also a inclusionary housing ordinance, affordable housing fees as well as, as well as commercial impact fee. And some other fees category that we are currently evaluating would be some of the sustainable program fee and also green fees. So lastly, um, I'm open to any question. Also, we have our legal counsel in the, uh, joining us on Zoom meeting tonight as well as Nick and Megan from Harrison Associate, if we have any questions about those impact fees. So that uh concluded my presentation tonight.
Thank you uh very much, uh, Mr. Lim. Uh, let's see, any comments or questions from the council? Okay, Councilman Lee?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, not so much a question, but I'm thinking uh, it's more of a, it's comment. And um, thank you staff for putting this together. I think it's uh very well done. We put a lot of, it's a lot of work. Um, it's not easy to figure this out. Um, the city needs uh in the coming days, coming years, the city's going to be looking at real budget um shortfalls and we won't be the only ones because of what's going on around the world, you know, to your economy and COVID-nineteens, the impact on our economy. Um, but from my comments from last, last meeting about not just cutting services, but also looking at future and building a good foundation for economic recovery. Um, most cities don't start the economic recovery until they've come, come out to the, come out of the red. And that's, to me, is kind of late. Um, and that's, uh, I mean, it is late. And if you want to be prosperous, you have to be ready, um, shovel-ready to go. So I would like to suggest that um we look at possibly incentivizing uh the building of, uh, I mean, the building of commercial space and office space. I, I think there's plenty of uh incentive to build housing. Uh, we all want to build housing. I don't think that uh developers know that there's a huge profit margin from building housing because most of it is market rate housing. So I don't think we'd have to, I don't think uh, uh, they need much incentive. But I do think that we don't, we don't really, we haven't really incentivized the commercial base. And if, if everybody realized that Millbrae has a seventy-two percent or more than that, eighty percent leakage rate, which means eighty percent of our citizens eat and, and shop outside Millbrae. Um, and we only have ten percent, ten percent of our, our property landmass is dedicated to our tax base. So whatever we don't make in our tax base is, is incumbent on the property owners, on to property taxes or service cuts. Um, these new, these new, the motel that's being built at Bart, the new, the new housing at Bart is going to come short. I mean, yeah, we're going to get millions of dollars in the beginning, but that's only going to last us like three or four years. So I like to encourage the council to look at, um, and staff to look at possibly incentivizing uh, building of hotels and commercial space.
So, uh, Councilman Lee, what do you have in mind in terms of incentivizing?
Well, I think that we neither, I mean, we, we, I think that we keep the rates, but we say if you like, you know, build this way um and you put money into like maybe more housing or something, affordable housing, then we'll lower your, your impact fee. So we can do some horse trading.
Okay. I mean, to me, those sound like, I mean, Mr. Williams, or legal counsel, correct me if I'm wrong. That sounds a little bit more like um something that would be, it'd be negotiated through a development agreement as opposed to uh, you know, something entered into the, the city code.
That is absolutely correct, Mr. Mayor. Uh, if I may refer you to page seven of the impact fee report that each of you have. So that is a provisions on credit and reimbursement policies on that and that can be negotiated through a development agreement.
Yeah, but I don't want to be the lone voice. So unless, unless the council, unless we have a majority of council agreeing, the city manager is not going to be. Um, I mean, he needs to hear from, from us at the council, what is our preference? Um, if I, you know, first, first I thought maybe we just in, lower our impact fees. Um, but I don't think that's going to be enough incentive. So um even though I know developers don't want to have to pay to impact fees, uh, we have to give them an incentive to come and build here.
Mr. Williams, do you have any ideas on that front?
Yeah.
Uh, I.
I think that these are great comments and I think moving towards, you know, economic development and incentivizing uh commercial uh employment-type land uses is, is extremely important to the city of Millbrae. I do think that there are provisions uh within the ordinance and, and uh um, you know, the resolution that provides the opportunity for the city, you know, as you've said, Mr. Mayor, to negotiate fees. There's flexibility uh built into this ordinance. And I know uh Mr. Nick uh Crawl is on the phone from Harris that can add in, into this as well. But I think it makes a lot of sense. And remember, development impact fees are, are, are for developments to pay its fair share. And if they otherwise provide the facilities, whether it's street improvements, park improvements, um, then they don't pay the fee. So it's only for those projects that don't actually provide the infrastructure um that's directly related to the impacts of their project. And certainly to incentivize, you know, if there's retail use or if there's office use and, and we're able to receive business-to-business sales tax, um, I think that we should, and I think it's smart to be able to sit down with the developer and applicant and offset those impact fees because of the revenue that then would be generated uh long-term uh as a result of the project. And, and each development, obviously each application uh is a little bit different and on a. And, and each development, obviously each application is a little bit different and on a case by case. So I think the, the comments are, are, you know, well, well directed. But I do think the ordinance that was adopted allows us for that type of flexibility on a project by project basis.
And I'm just saying that because I think developers, they just want to build housing because the profit margin is huge, it's big, so they don't really need incentives. They just, they want to build that, but that keeps leaves Millbury with very low, little tax incentive, I mean, tax opportunities, and that puts a huge burden on the existing property owners. I, I don't think that's fair to a lot of people to have to be forced out of our homes because our taxes keep going up. I mean, when I moved to Millbury thirty eight years ago, we didn't have, you know, this last two, two thousand dollars of extra property taxes. And then, and then you throw on top of that the water, the cost of water, you know, it gets very unaffordable for, for a lot of Millbury residents.
Yeah, I mean, to me, that's, that's, that sounds more like, you know, kind of a policy direction and possibly, you know, changes we can do to our zoning and our general plan to encourage more commercial development. I think, I think we're all in support of that. In my opinion, I don't think, you know, the amending the fees is necessarily, necessarily the right way to do that. You know, because these fees were all calculated through.
And I agree with you. That's, yeah. I agree with you, but I think it's, but we also need, at the council needs to tell the city managers what's, what's our thoughts.
Yeah, I agree. Yeah.
Yeah, you know, Mr. I, I think you're both right. I, I think that the ordinance and Nick, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the ordinance does have provisions that allow the type of flexibility that Councilmember Lee is, is discussing and, and, you know, I fully support that. And I think we have the flexibility to do that.
I understand we do have the flexibility, but I want to see, I want to hear the councils, take the, the council's temperature, what, what is it they want? Do they just want to have all housing? Or do they want to have a good mix of retail and housing and, and affordable housing? I mean, we could build a lot of housing, but I tell you right now that developers, they only want to build housing. They don't want to build anything else. And we, and our tax base, like I said, is a huge burden on our, on our current residents.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, we've kind of, you know, stalled on the, the general plan and, and the PDA specific plan, kind of, we've gone on and off over the last few years. Hoping, hopeful that we can restart that process and hopefully get that done at some point in the not too distant future. But I, you know, I think that would be a good way to, you know, encourage a mix of uses throughout the downtown, throughout the El Camino corridor. I think, you know, the stationary specific plan was a good start to that and, and, you know, TOD one and TOD two both have, I think, good mix of, of both housing, putting affordable housing.
The specific plan, it was, it was shown that it's going to be a sinkhole. We're going to, we're going to be paying more in taxes using our own, our own property taxes to pay for the services. It's not going to generate in, in three or four years, it's not going to generate the property taxes, won't generate the income in order to to us, to pay for the services that's required to provide for that, for that project.
You're talking about TOD two, the gateway project?
Talking about both projects. If, the reports have shown that in the first through two or three years, yeah, we got some money, but then after that we won't have any money because that money, because the property tax, the property taxes will not increase in the, in the, in the same rate as our expenses.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't recall there being a deficit after a couple of years from those developments, but you know, I think, I think you made a lot of good points and, you know, I think we all want to encourage more commercial development. I would as well. I would like to see more of a mix of uses. And I agree that developers tend to prefer residential development and they'll all, all will be crying poor over these fees, but they won't be able to do anything. I disagree. I don't think that's necessarily true in most of the cases. But yeah, we have, I think, I think we are in agreement on, on your general ideas here. Okay, let's go to Councilwoman Oliva.
If I may interrupt, Mayor.
Sorry, yes.
This is a public item. Can we have a motion to open the public hearing?
I believe it's already been opened.
It's been opened. Okay.
Okay, Councilman Oliva.
Yeah, I would, I would agree with Councilmember Lee. I mean, your points are well taken. I'm not so sure about the reports because I don't remember seeing any reports that after five years, we're going to be in the, in the red with, with what we approved. But yet your point's well taken and with this document, it gives us a tool to look organized and, and this is the tool that will, will get negotiated. Because at, at this point, we don't have anything, any way to go other than up. We are very low on any of this. So this, this is a tool that we can use going forward, Councilmember Lee, and I understand what you're saying, but if we don't have these kind of things in place, then there's nothing.
I'm not going against, I'm not going against saying we shouldn't have impact fees. I'm just bringing out the bigger picture.
Yeah, no, your, your points well taken, well taken. I would agree with it, but I don't think this is, this is where we would neglect to vote on something for, to make your point.
All right, Vice Mayor Schneider. Vice Mayor Schneider.
Sorry, I'm muting. Only my point to Councilman Lee. I spoke for the city at Senator Hill's housing workshop last weekend and told him that Millbury is already pretty heavily residential, does not mean we shouldn't be building more residential. We clearly have to meet, build housing at various levels, but we need a good, healthy commercial and corporate mix into the city. And hopefully he heard that. We're one of the few cities that, that doesn't have heavy commercial land in it. So I agree with you in there, but I think we're going to get there by mixed use and I think we're going to get it on El Camino Real. And that's all part of the Grand Boulevard concepts on there, which we were just beginning to implement. So I would love to see us go forward with these. I know the city manager and I have talked about making sure that we're comparing apples to apples and oranges to oranges. So that when people say, oh, Millbury, your fees are so high, but you're actually comparing them to cities who have looked at their fees in the last ten years. So I'm ready to go ahead and vote for this.
Okay, Councilwoman Papan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree with Councilmember Lee and that we, if you look at the jobs, housing imbalance, we are way heavy on the housing side and we do need to increase our commercial aspects to the best possible way. And I think the way to do that is to keep working more quickly than ever on our general plan and the plan along El Camino Real. And this allows us to do that. We don't want people coming in here. We need to be very clear on our zoning and our plans. Prime example is the Orchard Supply property, which San Francisco would like to do certain things with. We need to be very strong in our zoning and maintaining our commercial aspect moving forward here. So I think we go ahead with this tonight and we move right directly into really defining our plans. And I would like to see, we did mention at one point a design review committee because we seem to continue to get the designs from the station plan, which are not the best designs. So this is our opportunity getting beyond this and moving in the right direction to.
We have any public comments on this item?
Yes, we do have one item of public comment for this item and I'll go ahead and read that. This is from Tram Nguyen, Dear Mayor and Millbury City Council Members. The proposed development impact fees scheduled to be voted on by the city council is at face value, well intended. Tom Williams, city manager, stated that these fees are meant for developers to pay their fair share. The fees being proposed are well and above our neighboring municipalities and would be among the highest in the peninsula. These fees may be, may be justified, but there is, has been minimal public opportunity to comment on this proposal. Due to the COVID nineteen pandemic, only three people had an opportunity to have their voice heard at your last meeting. Certainly, COVID nineteen pandemic is sure to affect this proposal beyond limiting public opinion, but there has been no consideration for this factor at all. We mentioned in our last correspondence, some of the unintended consequences that would occur. Before implementing such a dramatic change in the fee structure, I asked city council to delay voting on this important topic, topic until there has been enough time fully vet this issue with respect to COVID nineteen. Possible unintended consequences with discussion of mitigation strategies and additional public commentary. For such an important issue that will affect our city for many years to come, the city staff needs further time to get this right. Thank you for your attention and assistance in this matter. Sincerely, Hoi Man Hong and Tram Nguyen. And that concludes that.
Sorry, that was the, that was the only comment?
Correct.
Thank you very much, Ms. Lewis. Okay. See, there are a couple of hands up, but I think that those were already addressed. So do we have a, a motion to approve? Or sorry, motion, oh, sorry, motion to close the public hearing?
If I may interrupt, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
City Court Angela Lewis, I believe we also received a public comments from the BIA to an email addressed to all five council members.
That was a different item. That, that was on, that was on a different item on the consent calendar, not on this item.
Not on the, okay. All right. So anyway, I think we have done a couple, this impact fee study actually had started back in late twenty eighteen. So there were a couple of public meetings that had been conducted previously prior to me taking all of the projects. So sorry to interrupt.
So sorry, Mr. Lim and Mr. Williams. The, the email that was received from the Building Industry Association that technically was on item seven, but I believe it also referred to the fees themselves, which falls under this item, item number ten. So I mean, I think we don't have to read the whole email, but perhaps has staff looked over the comments and would be willing to address those?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I mean, to be fair, I think we can read it into the record on this item.
So do you want to read that, Angela, or you would, do you like me to read it?
I have the letter here. I can read it.
It's very difficult to summarize, so.
It's a fairly long letter and a couple of comments that we could address the BIA also after Angela gets a rep the comments.
Would you like me to read the, the letter, Mayor Oliver?
Yeah, you can. Maybe we can just skip ahead to the, the, the comments that were specifically directed on the, on the school fees.
Okay, I will, I'll skip down to about halfway through the letter where they list out some of the policies to include, if that's okay. So it starts here, BIA recommends the following policies to include in the development impact fee ordinance. Recognize that SB thirty thirty prohibits fee increases on all residential products with complete applications. Grandfather existing fees on the commercial square footage of mixed use projects with residential component. Delay implementation of fees for one year to give the market time to incorporate fee increases into land values. Adopt a fifty percent private open space credit set aside on park fees. Reduce the administrative fee to the municipal standard of two percent. Adopt an option for development projects to pay impact fees at certificate of occupancy. Collection of fees at a later stage of development saves millions in construction financing costs. Total fee load, the total fee load before and after adoption of the development impact fee, including BMR inclusionary or linkage, linkage fees should be studied. The staff report and supporting document omit important parts of this information. The Turner Center for Housing Innovation at UC Berkeley has concluded in its March twenty eighteen report, it all adds up. The cost of housing development fees in seven California cities, individual fees add up, add up and substantially increase the cost of building housing. Findings from this report show that development impact fees have significant implications for the cost of delivery of new housing in California. For example, Tenor Center research found that total fees can amount to anywhere from six percent to eighteen percent of the median price of new home, of new, of a new home, depending on location. On an April twenty nineteen report on international construction costs by the management and consulting firm Turner and Townsend found that the San Francisco Bay area is in fact the most expensive place to build in the world, costing an average of is four hundred and seventeen per square foot, followed by New York State at three hundred and sixty eight. Why? In an August twenty nineteen Mountain View Voice article, Leslie Corsilia, executive director of Silicon Valley at Home speculated the local city shared the blame. Construction is slowing at a time when we need housing more than ever and we need to figure out ways to help developers move forward and deal with these challenges. And I think that's through some streamlining and ways that cities themselves can help reduce costs. It is vital for BIA to point out that impact fees create serious impediments to addressing the housing affordability crisis the region is facing. BIA Bay Area looks forward to working with the city of Millbury on development issues. Thank you for your attention to these concerns. Dennis Martin, BIA Bay Area.
You're correct, Mr. Williams, that many of those issues that were raised deal more with the ordinance than the actual fees, although they are opposed to, to the fees themselves due to the high amount. Are there any particular comments about the actual fees that can be made, you know, about these, these comments or are they all pretty much about the ordinance?
A couple of highlights. I would say that, you know, relative to state legislation, that speaks for itself. We do not need to include any state legislation within our development impact fee ordinance because we need to follow state law. And that changes, I will say from an economic perspective, that our fees based on, you know, the average market rate for housing is, is about six percent. Twenty five years ago, development impact fees as a percentage of value, market value was, was somewhere between eight and twelve percent. So as a percentage of fees to the value, market value of a home, fees are actually coming down as a percentage. And, and I do believe it's incumbent upon new projects to certainly pay its fair share of their impact. And at, at the rates that we have, we are not the highest. I think the, the analysis that we did, we're, we're third from the top. And other cities are, are moving forward with updating and studying their development impact fee programs as well. So anytime, you know, we compare ourselves, it's always a snapshot in time and, and cities are good and fees are changing. And so I think, I think they're fair and the developer has a choice. They can build the infrastructure and not pay the fee. And, and so this is protecting the city and obviously we're recommending approval.
Mr. Lim, did you have any comments?
This is a couple of highlight quick comment. One other comment from the BIA that mentioned that the admin, the admin fee standard is about two percent, which is not true. The typical admin fee is anywhere between three to five percent. And also just to continue on what our city manager had mentioned about Millbury proposed impact fee. Our impact fee is actually quite low. If you look at the comment from Dennis Martin, the impact is anywhere from sixty percent to eighteen percent. And just judging from the sales price of Millbury, just as a typical two bedroom condo, we, we see leasing over a million dollars. So we are charging an impact ease of forty seven thousand, which is quite low, which is lower than six percent. So, so just, but just to put it in context for you. And also in regard to the support for commercial linkage and whatnot, those are going to be the phase two of our impact is study, which is commencing right now with Harrison Associate. So those are just the highlight comments I'd like to share.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lim. Yeah, that was my observation as well, based on the cost of housing in this region, we're think much closer to the six percent, if not below it, than, than we are to the eighteen percent of high end of that range. Okay, let's see, Councilman Lee, I see your hand up. I don't know if that was a new comment.
Comment. I just, I just, just piling onto that. I, I don't, I'm not worried about developers being not wanting to develop here because there are a lot of developers who want to develop here. I keep, I'm constantly getting that inquiry. And there's always somebody who wants to, because they see the potential of Millbury. They know it's right. It's the only, it's a city that's directly connected to the airport. It's, you know, it has great restaurants. People love to live in this town because, because of the atmosphere and how, and how people treat each other. So they really, I mean, this is a ideal location for most people because the first thing they see when they land the airport is Millbury. So I'm not worried about, I'm not worried about some one or one or two developers thinking it's going to be too expensive for them because there are a lot of other developers around. So I'm not worried about, um, I'm not worried about some, one or one or two developers thinking it's going to be too expensive for them because there are a lot of other developers around.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion from Vice Mayor Schneider and a second from Councilman Lee. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Uh, yes, Councilmember Lee.
Aye.
Councilmember Papin.
Aye.
Councilmember Oliva.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Schneider.
Aye.
Mayor Holliver.
Aye.
The public hearing is closed.
Okay, um, do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have another motion from Vice Mayor Schneider and a second from Councilman Lee. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Lee.
Aye.
Councilmember Papin.
Aye.
Councilmember Oliva.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Schneider.
Aye.
Mayor Holliver.
Aye.
The resolution adopting development impact fees for general government facilities, recreation facilities, public safety, park acquisition of facilities and mobile infrastructure is unanimously adopted.
Okay, thank you. All right, let's go on to item number eleven, resolution of the appropriating operating and capital budgets for fiscal year twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one. And we have seen in a, a couple of presentations about this recently. So let's go to, let's see, Ms. Boyd here? Yes, Ms. Boyd? And do you have a presentation?
Yes, good evening, Mayor, members of the council. I'm going to attempt to share my screen with you. I wasn't successful at this last time, so let's see if I can do better this time. Are you now seeing my screen?
Yes.
Okay, let's see if I can get us into the slideshow. Okay, so we did discuss this at the last council meeting, and we spent quite a bit of time on it. So I'm going to move fairly quickly through the information this time. We're going to talk a little bit about how the decision is developed, some of our assumptions. We're going to run through the numbers fairly quickly of the major operating funds of the city. And then we're going to look at some cost containment measures that we are recommending. So the budget process is that departments review their activity and they propose their operating capital budget. Then the departments meet with the city manager and the finance director. And then the finance director develops a draft budget for the city manager to review, and the proposed budget is reviewed by the council's budget committee. And then the proposed budget is presented to the council for review. And then tonight, what we're doing is asking the council for adoption. Uh, when we looked at the, um, uh, the assumptions that we needed to make based upon the downturn in the economy due to COVID nineteen, we came up with some assumptions about the reduction in revenues, specifically sales tax and TOT. We think our assumptions are fairly close to what's going to happen. However, we highly recommend that these get looked at periodically. And we'll talk about that when we get to cost containment measures. Sales tax, our, our assumption is the first quarter will be twenty-five percent of the prior fiscal year. Now, quarters two through four will be seventy-five percent of the prior fiscal year. TOT, the first quarter at ten percent of the prior fiscal year, and the second through fourth quarter is at fifty-five percent of the prior fiscal year. To see here how this has an impact, you look at the last column of numbers, the twenty twenty-one proposed budget. Our revenues there are twenty-nine point eight million, and in twenty twenty amended budget there were thirty-two point one. So our proposed budget is dropping revenues by close to three million. Our expenses also, we've, we've been, we've been very cautious about projecting expenses. We've been on a cost, cost, uh, spending freeze and personnel hiring freeze, and we have cut the expenses as much as we can in order to keep it within our, our revenue. So our operating expenses are twenty-nine point one million, and so that's coming in less than our revenue. However, we do have transfers out for operating of two point nine million, and that goes out to the Parks and Rec Fund and Storm Drain Fund and the Field License Fund. Those funds do not have sufficient revenues to support themselves, because the general fund backfills that. We have one transfer out for capital to the Storm Drain Fund. And I just want to remind you, we've talked about this before, but over a number of years, the general fund had accumulated roughly twenty-two million in available fund balance. Uh, that's a fund balance above and beyond reserves. In the last couple of years, the city has been reinvesting that money into the community through streets improvement and capital improvement programs. We look at our general fund balance, our audited fund balance at six thirty nineteen, the available fund balance is thirteen point three million. Our twenty nineteen, twenty amended budget had a, uh, negative eight point one, the twenty twenty-one budget has a negative two point three. That leaves us projecting an available fund balance at six thirty twenty-one of two point eight. So let's look at some of the other operating funds. We've got the Recreation Fund, revenues and expenses are essentially balanced. That fund is backfilled by the General Fund. Measure A, Measure W, and Highway Users Tax are all, um, streets, um, basically those, those, um, funds are doing streets improvement. These negative amounts over here are using prior accumulated fund balance in order to get the projects done that we wanted to get done. We have two projects that are being included in this budget, and it's Port Del Sol and New Oxford Project. And then the field maintenance agreement is also backfilled by the General Fund. Utility funds, um, the sewer funds, the water funds are balanced. The Storm Drain Fund has a net positive of eighty-one thousand. That amount will likely change as we go through the year and we see how much the general fund actually needs to to backfill. It may be less than what is in this revenue amount at the current time. And then we have our proposed cost containment provisions. And we're basically proposing this because we don't really know at this point in time what's going to happen with the economy. We know sales tax and TOT is going to be down quite a bit, but we don't know for how, how long that's going to last, how quickly the economy will bounce back. So we're recommending some cost containment provisions. Uh, we're also recommending that the staff report on a monthly basis, the budget to actual to the council, so they can see how things are progressing. And then on a quarterly basis to propose any budget amendments that may be appropriate based upon how revenues and expenses have been coming in. Also on a quarterly basis to review these cost containment provisions and determine if any of them should be, um, changed in any way whatsoever. But basically, I'm just going to run through them real quick. Uh, no new headcount, that means no new personnel, no new hires. Freeze, uh, any open positions for little part-time positions unless they're cost recoverable or determined essential. So that means we still have part-time positions when they are cost recoverable, such as in Parks and Rec or Determined Essential and some of the other departments. Freeze the purchases of vehicles and equipment unless approved by the city council. Freeze IT hardware and software, except those already underway or in emergencies. Freeze capital improvement projects, except those already underway from the general fund. So there's capital improvement projects in the utility funds that are still going to move forward. Discontinue or significantly reduce contract services. Freeze spending on upgrades or deferred maintenance on city facilities, except in emergency. Now, remember what we're talking about is let's just take a pause for three months and look at this again, three months from now, and determine if these cost containment provisions are still appropriate. We're not saying that we're never going to do any hires, we're never going to do any equipment purchases, and we're never going to do any of these things. What we're saying right now is let's take a, let's take a pause for, for three months on, on any spending. And then we'll apply for any eligible penal reimbursement. So that is basically my presentation. Do you have any questions for me?
Thank you very much, Ms. Boyd. Uh, one quick question on the cost containment. Are there any attrition savings factored into the, the budget?
Yes, we did take, um, positions that are currently authorized but unfilled, and we removed that from the budget so that we're not budgeting for vacant positions.
For the entire fiscal year?
That's correct. And that, once again, can be looked at again as we go along through the year. And determine what needs to, to be adjusted as we go, as we move forward, as we see what our actual experience is going to be.
Thank you very much. Okay, uh, let's see, Vice Mayor Schneider?
Thank you, Mayor. At the San Francisco Airport Noise Roundtable last week, the director of SFO gave an update of what's been happening at the airport. He said during the most of the shelter in place and with the international flight vans, SFO was at three percent of capacity. In the time that we started opening up, so basically portions of the month of May, they're at five percent capacity. They hope to be at fifty percent of normal pre-COVID capacity by December. So I look at it as, well, right now, we're still not hearing much noise. We'll start hearing more noise. The flip side of that is if we can work with our hotels and our other entities in town that might encourage people to come visit us, this is the time to really be concentrating on that. I mentioned that I was on a hospitality webinar a couple of weeks ago, but how our hotels get ready, how they advertise themselves in terms of cleanliness and safety for customers could be a way that will help us, our businesses, and the city bounce back. But we're looking at, if, if Ivar is correct, about fifty percent by December. And we should be figuring out how to capitalize on that.
Thank you very much, Ms. Schneider. And, you know, like, the, the TOT tax is collected, uh, I believe, once a month, so that's something we should take a, a close eye on. And, and just from my own observations, I'm, I'm seeing a few more cars in the hotel parking lots than we saw, you know, a month or two ago, but, um, still, you know, well below capacity. So hopefully those start to, to pick up, uh, uh, in the coming months as well.
I think, sorry, Mayor, it wouldn't hurt if we had, we're here and we're open for business or some kind of project that we, the city, works with the chamber, works with what used to be the Tourism Subcommittee to get our name out there, because some of the hotels farther down the peninsula are at much higher capacity. There are higher use rates right now. I think their customer mix is different. But I, I think we should be working on it. And that was the Subcommittee that, I think, then Mayor Lee created. That's Annie and me. If we can find the time, I know Annie and I both said we could, we want to do that, but if we can find some staff time, maybe we can help.
Thank you. All right. Are there any, I don't see any other hands up on this item. Were there any public comments received?
No, no public comment for this item.
Okay. All right. Well, um, you know, this is something we'll continue to monitor, um, over, uh, throughout the year. Hopefully the picture improves a bit, or at least becomes a bit more, more clear, um, as revenues start to come in. Okay, do we have a motion to approve?
Make a motion.
Okay. A motion from Councilman Lee. Go ahead.
I just wanted also thanks staff for the report. We really appreciate you keeping an eye on what's going on.
Okay, thank you. All right, I heard a, a motion from Councilman Lee and a second from Vice Mayor Schneider.
I'm trying to give you. Yeah, there's an opportunity.
I don't know if anyone else seconded it, but, um, okay, let's, uh, have a roll call vote, please.
Uh, Councilmember Lee.
Aye.
Councilmember Papin.
Aye.
Councilmember Oliva.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Schneider.
Aye.
Mayor Holliver.
Aye.
The resolution appropriating operating and capital budgets for fiscal year twenty twenty-one is unanimously approved.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, and now, um, final item on the agenda, which is item twelve, an urgency ordinance of the city of Millbury regarding the use of city property for outdoor dining. Do we have a, a presentation on this? Or are we having staff report?
We.
Yes, Ms. Mayor, Mr. Key Lim or, uh, actually Elisa Tierney, our Economic Development Manager, will be providing the presentation this evening.
So Elisa, I will flick you to the PowerPoint. I'll go to the second page of Key Lane here, and we have Elisa on, uh, in the audience.
Hi, um, so we have to be able to share the screen. Right now, I'm still seeing, um, our finance director's presentation up.
I'm actually sharing screen, so does anyone see my screen?
Ah, there we go. There we go.
There it is.
Okay.
Start to slide.
Okay, so, um, as you all know, we have been in the middle of a major pandemic. And, um, it has hit our restaurants and businesses really hard. I mean, I think we have to look at how innovative they've all been in terms of trying to accommodate pickup and various ways that they can still serve their clientele. But it has definitely been a challenge, and our objective in bringing this tonight is to find mechanisms to assist the restaurants any way we can. And so one of the things that, that staff has been looking at is, um, allowing an outdoor commercial activity and, and restaurants seating capacity to increase for social distancing reasons now that outdoor dining is permitted again. And again, these are interim measures. We're not, uh, at this point suggesting that this is any permanent, um, situation, but but, uh, at this point, that's our, our, um, our approach. And our opportunities, what we have to offer as a city are, are public spaces. They need more space and we have public right of way. We have sidewalks, we have streets, and we have parking lots. Next slide.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but, uh, before you go on, can we make the screen, uh, make it a full screen, please?
Yes, sir.
Start the slideshow up at the top.
Slide show, yeah.
Um, am I s- This is so slut- yeah, you got it.
There you go.
Thank you.
He's been having fun.
I know. He's been having a little too much fun, actually, clearly. Okay, next one. So this is ju- this is just the, the, um, quick calendar events leading us to where we are now. March seventeenth, we started the shelter in place. May eighth, almost two months later, uh, the state allowed us to enter into stage two and said that many businesses could open, restaurants could not in early stage two, knowing that eventually it would be later stage two, at which point dining in establishments would be allowed to open. In light of that, and in trying to prepare for that, staff asked the Economic Vitality Committee to host meetings with businesses and restaurants in the community. And we had a tremendous turnout, um, lots of good concepts, lots of good discussion. The meeting on May twenty-first, that was the first meeting we had, and we had a follow-up meeting a week later because of such strong interest, at which point, at which point we, we focused on the use of public right of ways for expansion of the restaurants. So, um, we had done this in, in preparation for what we thought was going to be advanced warning in terms of the reopening of restaurants in the later stage two, and were surprised on June fourth, when we were notified by San Mateo County that they were allowing, or about in two days' time, to allow restaurants to open out for outdoor dining. We immediately sent notices to the businesses and restaurants and, um, and started. Our city manager took the lead on establishing an urgency ordinance, as you know, and resolution to implement outdoor dining. So that's where we currently are. Um, next slide. So tonight, um, for this reopening program, there are two actions before you, the urgency ordinance and the resolution, both of which regard the interim use of city property for outdoor dining. So staff recommends the city council take the following actions to assist Millbury Restaurants. And this is a, to a. And this is to expand their capacity by literally expanding space for their external use at this, at this point. And it's a temporary allowance on, on the city's part to use the portions of the sidewalks, city rights-of-way, city-owned parking lots, and on-street parking. And the actions are to enact an urgency ordinance suspending certain requirements of the municipal code in order to allow outdoor dining, adopt a resolution allowing the use of public sidewalks, streets, and on-street parking for outdoor dining, and provide guidance to staff on implementation issues related to outdoor dining and review of concept plans. So there are a number of ways in which, you know, there's kind of a hierarchy or a tiered approach that staff realized going into this. So, and these are the priority solutions, if you will, for the outdoor restaurant expansion. The first is private property, and we can give you examples, but that is just allowed outright. So if somebody like the Millbrae Pancake House wants to expand on their property, they can. And we have, as you know, been working very closely with the ownership of the Pancake House to allow for modifications. Excuse me, moving on, the second areas and, and most likely the, the ones to be most trafficked or the most sought-after by restaurants would be the use of sidewalks and public parking lots. And both of those would require an administrative encroachment permit if, if you continue to move forward and approve this. The, the next one is street closures, and that is an authority that is in, right now, in the draft resolution before you tonight for the city manager. And that would only be for special events on evenings and weekends. And again, it's, it's temporary. I, I want to stress that because in our dialogue, oftentimes with the community, people kept going ahead and, and thinking into the future. And this is really to solve the interim problems we're having now. And then five is the request for creation of street parklets. We have already seen a few individuals who would like that. On the staff level, we feel that that is, requires a certain level of master planning and consequently would like that to be something that the council considers and takes action on via an encroachment permit approval. Okay, so, the council actions tonight, the necessary actions for the outdoor dining to occur would be the urgency ordinance, and that would suspend the requirement of conditional use permit for outdoor dining and suspend, this is a hard one to say, but basically suspend our prohibition on the outdoor consumption of alcoholic beverages. And so it would be suspend for the patrons of the restaurants with the outdoor dining encroachment permits, the prohibition on the possession of open containers of alcoholic beverages on the public streets, public right-of-way, sidewalks, et cetera. And then for the resolution, it would allow the use of public streets and on-street parking for outdoor dining and provide temporary authority to the city manager to close the streets and restrict street parking in order to expand outdoor dining beyond the sidewalk. Again, I want to reiterate, in terms of closing the streets, that is only for the special events and on evenings and weekends, as we mentioned already. So the staff actions, that was the, the council's piece. The staff's piece would be the outdoor dining encroachment permit. And that would allow the restaurants to serve diners food and alcohol in designated public right-of-way areas. And then also, on the city manager level, the city manager would have authorization to periodically close the streets. And it would allow the interim closures for the special events. And importantly, I, there was a great discussion at the Economic Vitality Advisory Committee among the members and the restaurants who were represented about respecting the balance. Not everybody wants the street closed. Some businesses are, are surviving the fact of easy curbside pickup, et cetera, and want that to continue. And so that was the balance that our city manager was trying to respect in periodically closing streets for events. So we have some concept plans that we wanted to share with you. And then Key, I'm gonna let you go from here, if you want to. The three blocks of Broadway, sorry, go ahead.
So we have a, we kind of bounced around a few ideas. We spent some hours touring downtown, talking to business owners, business owners, and kind of take temperatures about what they want and what they don't want. Like Elisa mentioned earlier, some of them are very comfortable with their current business model, and they want to continue with just a takeout and delivery services. Some restaurants want to do outdoor dining, some do not want to do that. So we just want to some quick concept for the council and the audience. We'll start with the 400 block of Broadway between Taylor and Hillcrest. So on this concept, we thought, we talked with 16 Mile House, actually, and then city manager William talked with Zen Bistro recently. And we're gonna have some meeting with those businesses. The parking in front, actually next to, next to Ed Roger Realty and also Zen Bistro, that one parking lot could potentially be blocked out for outdoor dining. And also, just for concept purposes, the Guam Lake Village Restaurant and Shanghai Dumpling, since they are side-by-side, so we thought it might be conducive if they want to expand the sidewalk dining along to a parking street, as long as they provide some safety barriers that protect the dining. So this is the 400 block of Broadway, going to the 300 block next. So this is 300 block of Broadway between Hillcrest and La Cruz. And we thought the parking lot on Magnolia, the big parking lot, to the back of this restaurant, we have the Broadway Bistro, Indian Restaurant, Eastley Restaurant, and we have a very popular T4 here. So that, but some, some concept is that we could open up some of the parking in the big parking lot and let the restaurants expand the outdoor dining to those area in addition to the sidewalk area here. So going out to the next block, which is the 200 block of Broadway from La Cruz to Victoria in the game, we thought the parking lot, the farmer's market parking lot could potentially be used for outdoor dining right about here. A couple restaurants here has expressed interest about using the parking lot area for outdoor dining. And also, moving on to the Front East Road, we have a couple larger Asian restaurants here. So those are parking area in the parking lot could potentially also be useful for expanded outdoor dining area if the restaurant choose to do so. So these are just some very rough concept. So I'll turn that over to you, Elisa, we'll talk about the next steps.
So, you know, we, we have been looking at this as a partnership and really trying to forge that with the business and restaurant community. One of the things that we are, are seeing is, so the city has stepped up and is offering the use of the city property. We've talked about ways that we could mark pavements, tape them off, or create some mechanism by which both the pedestrians and the restaurant owners would know where to set up and where to walk. The city would provide the ingress and egress barriers. So for the parking lots, we would make sure that it was safe and restriping the parking areas if that was necessary as a result of taking parking spaces or circulation changes. And on the part of the restaurants, staff was hoping that they would be providing the tables, the chairs, and the umbrellas. They would take responsibility for the cleaning and sanitizing each time there was turnover. They would be responsible for the outdoor storage of, I mean, the, the storage of the outdoor furniture. So they would, they would take it in every night, that staff really doesn't have the manpower at this point to be taking everything down and putting it back up every day. And then finally, some aesthetic separators or planter boxes, they would provide to basically designate their space. And that's as far as we've gotten, and we're hopeful that you have questions and we'll consider the urgency ordinance resolution. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Ms. Tierney. And Mr. Lemon, I know this was a lot of outreach that was done with our, our business owners in a pretty short amount of time. And to turn this ordinance around, we, you know, we were notified by the county on the health order on Thursday, and had to get this out by Friday. So thank you very much for all your hard work on that. I think there still are, you know, some details that need to be flushed out, at least in terms of, with parklets. You know, some type of, of objective criteria for, for allowing, you know, when to allow park, parklets. I think also, you know, you mentioned at least a few times that the street closures would only be for special events, and I think that's a good idea. But I think that should be spelled out in, in the ordinance itself. These are not going to be, you know, massive street closures, permanent, long-term street closures. It would only be for, for, for special events. And I believe, Mr. Williams, you would want to have that come before, you know, the council before, you know, authorizing something. Let's see. Those are just my, my initial thoughts. I think the, the concepts look very good. I, I think for the, I believe the 300 block of Broadway, in my opinion, it might make more sense to, if you're gonna put in parklets there, to do it on the Broadway side as opposed to the Magnolia side. Because, you know, that way the foot traffic on, on Broadway would, would be more visible to, to foot traffic. It wouldn't be that easy to see in, in the back of the parking lot. So, you know, members of the public know that these restaurants would be open. These are just my initial thoughts. Councilwoman Oliva.
Thank you, and I apologize in the beginning here. My dogs are going crazy because there's firecrackers going out in front. But Elisa, amazing job in, like, such a short period of time. And I'll, I'll tell you that I was part, I was a liaison for the Economic Vitality Committee, and she conducted that meeting with such patience and composure and compassion. So I thank you very much for taking care of our people. And of course, Tom was there too, and, and he was amazing. There's, there's a lot of hardworking people in Millbrae, and you saw through that. I just, I, I love the plan, I think it's amazing, awesome. I'd like to, two questions. Do we have any lights left over from the project that we did on Hillcrest that we might be able to facilitate some lighting for these parking lot ideas? And I guess my major concern is, when we did the food, the food trucks, it was a great idea, it was all fun, but it was freaking cold. So if we could figure out how we can get some sort of portable heaters and help these businesses and the patrons that are our people as well feel comfortable. So those are my comments. And I would have saved that for council comment, but the, I, I couldn't hold it back. They're amazing, I can't say enough for staff, thank you so much.
Thank you very much. So Vice Mayor Schneider.
Hi, thank you. First to staff, I heard from a, a member of restaurants, and they were just so pleased that you also came and walked down Broadway and met with them. And they would love to see you do that as often as you have time for. So thank you for that, I heard nothing but good things. I too love the plan, I am very appreciative that you all started working on this well in advance of the county order. Good job. Couple of questions. I heard that one of the big problems, and we all know, we have wind. So if they're gonna put up those planter boxes, which I think is a great idea, would they also be allowed to put in some plastic wind screens? And if that's not, we're not there yet, then just think of that for the future. I heard that years ago, Bacchus asked if they could put out a table in Pakes Meat Market parking lot and be able to serve alcohol so people who are testing different wines could go outside for a little bit. Under this term or plan, would they be allowed to do that?
Yes, I believe, I believe they would.
Well, because they're not...
I mean, I don't, I don't...
I'm sorry.
You know, Mr. Mayor, I'm writing down a series of questions from, from all the council members that we can address. But to answer Councilmember Schneider's question, yes, and as Elisa was saying, they can under the order, as long as they have a current ABC license. They can utilize that to, 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 to serve outside.
Excellent. Again, I love the idea. I think that this is making lemon, or lemonade out of lemons. Our restaurants will get an opportunity to see what it's like to have, quote, wider sidewalks, and why it might be advantageous to approve the Downtown Business Improvement District, and what a, what a new face, meaning different sidewalks, different parking configurations could mean for Millbrae. So I am very excited about this. I have also talked to the city manager, I know it's not quite ready. I think when you've got restaurants on both sides, which might be more the 400 and 300 block, you're gonna have problems having traffic going in both directions. So I'm just letting you know that I am open to, for temporary, thinking of making this a one-way street and let people try out what that might be. I think it prevents a lot of people backing into each other. It, it gives you fewer things to be looking at and hopefully prevent people from getting hit or the parklets, should we go the parklet route, which I'm in support of, to do. And you also added the alcohol from what I, I talked to you earlier. So I think it's great.
Yeah, a point of clarification on the alcohol, as I mentioned, the ABC license, but also, the restaurant has to serve food with the alcohol menu. So I wanted to just make sure that you can't just go in and, and serve alcohol. It has to be with food service.
I will tell you, Tom, now that my announcement that I'm on the statewide commission for recycling markets, there's a huge concern internationally that restaurants will go entirely to disposables. When you have a disposable cup, your tendency is to get up from the table and start walking down the street. If the restaurants use reusables, people don't tend to take them and walk away. So you can watch how this is gonna roll out. But the state, the state will be looking at it because we have this new commission.
Okay. Let's see. Councilman Lee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, thank you, staff, for doing that. I think that's incredibly, thank you for the speed you've been doing that. I know you've been working, actually been working on the city manager, Tom Williams, been working on this for quite a while, even before the, before the lifting restriction so that we were ready to go. So thank you, staff, for being ready to do this. I have a question, did, the kitchen didn't, they didn't respond? Because to me, I saw that all the restaurants on the... Or was I looking at the map wrong, Key?
They did, they did respond. Go ahead.
Okay, so you have...
The kitchen did respond, yeah. They did express interest, and we will be working with them about how to set up.
Okay, I must have looked at the map.
If they choose to do so.
I must have seen the map wrong. I also want to encourage us to think about closing off, like, some of the lesser-used streets like La Cruz, and possibly making some space there if it's, if it's, if it's feasible and, and usable. But I'm really very supportive of what you're doing, the parklets, I really like. Uh, but I'm really very supportive of what you're doing. Um, the parklets, I really like. Um, and I like the, uh, I like to use the parking lots, especially right now because it's uh, it's right now, just like Saturdays is just used for the farmer's market and it takes up like 100 something or 70 something spaces that can't be used for patrons. So I like this. I'm, I'm glad that we're going to have a better, more effective use out of it. But I'd also like to see if we can move the farmer's market into the street, then if that's the case. Um, and then they, they can both, you know, and show that uh they can co-assist.
Okay. Okay, um, Councilwoman Papin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you to staff. Everything looks um exciting at this point in time. I know some of the cities are uh doing the same thing. I heard on the news tonight, uh, how does someone go about getting these permits? Uh, some of the other cities were doing it just online uh to make things move more quickly, to get people um, get businesses back up and running. So I don't know what the process is related to that. And although this seems maybe somewhat disgusting, we do have that back alleyway um behind some of the restaurants on Broadway. Um, you know, we're looking for every opportunity here to uh make things safer and uh expand on the use of land that we have now. Just a thought. Not, but um if we're looking for locations there, I know some uh restaurants in other cities have like a back um place where they can set up tables and stuff. Right now, I wouldn't recommend it there, but uh maybe something to look at for the near future. Uh, so as soon as we can get this moving, if looking for a motion, I'd be happy to do so. Thank you.
Can I just throw in two quick comments?
Sure.
Um, Tom, at the alleys, one of the ways to do that is to get agreement amongst the various retailers to share a garbage enclosure, and that would free up a good portion of the alleys. And I don't want to put Ms. Van Ward on the spot, but Debbie Van Ward on the Cultural Arts Advisory Committee has these great videos of how back alley artwork has made what was once really ugly into pretty intriguing spaces. I was thinking when the, I think the mayor said, why have the seating on the Magnolia parking lot on the other side? But both of those two restaurants actually have pretty unique little backs, and it could become charming with a little bit of art. And there's some fairly dilapidated trees back there, but with a little bit of work, it could become quite cute. But Debbie's got this great collection of slides.
I think for the alley, you know, behind uh, between Broadway and Al Camino, that's more of a, I'd say a long-term project and possibly the ID is ever formed, maybe something they could work on um at this point, uh, you know, assuming that this is a temporary urgency ordinance that'll um, hopefully indoor seating will be allowed again in the next, you know, month or so. Um, I, I, I don't think that alley can be cleaned up in time to the point where where restaurant customers would want to uh sit back there and eat. Um, but, but nice creative idea for, for, for the long term. Okay, um, so I think, you know, Mr. Williams, maybe if you, you mentioned you were, you were taking notes on all of these uh comments that came up. Um, do you want to maybe go through them or uh, you know?
Sure, uh, just real briefly. So the street closure, you know, so that, that's since we don't have a, a, a merchant association or a BID, what we would like to come up with is, is a master plan continuing to work with the restaurants and other businesses uh for specialized events. And, you know, my, kind of the idea or the plan is to, to notify the council of, of those dates in a master plan. But sometimes, you know, I found that we have to sometimes act quickly, depending on the weather and depending on um the requests that we receive from uh, from restaurants and, and, and merchants. So the idea was to kind of be as fluid as possible, but still keep the council informed, you know, every, every step of the way. So uh, to the best of our ability, you know, and if the council agrees, we will be bringing these street closures to the city council, but there may be a time that we'll have to perhaps act quickly uh to accommodate the needs uh of a restaurant in between council meetings. So that, that's kind of the idea there. But we would notify you. And then, you know, perhaps if we need to have a um, a, a, a quick meeting of the city council with a forum, we can do that, you know, as well. We're just trying to stay as fluid as possible during this interim period. Um, I, I think it was just mentioned, uh, the Magnolia parking lot. The idea there is, you know, to allow tables on the sidewalk. So when people are, you know, walking or traveling down Broadway, they see activity. And then as they come to the, uh, to the restaurant, um, the restaurant then can take them through to the outside to expand seating. But for sure, you know, Mayor, the activity on Broadway is extremely important and something that, you know, Lisa and the planning staff have, have tried to work on uh to, to provide that. Um, I think Councilmember Oliva, in terms of the lighting and um portable heaters, we've been discussing that quite a bit. We think it's a great idea. Patio lighting, for example, in the parking lot between 60 Mile House and Zen Bistro, ideally for that, we've been talking to some restaurant uh, uh owners about uh investing in some uh portable heaters, you know, the propane type tank heaters. Um, Recreation has mentioned that they may be able to use those for special events in the future. So we are looking, you know, at, at all of that. Um, I think uh also the wind screens and the type of development, um, you know, of a temporary uh outdoor area, we are open to that. Uh, certainly, we've had conversations with various restaurant operators like the kitchen uh on the parking lot to do just that. Um, the parklets, uh, coming up with uh, you know, some um scenarios or, or regulations, uh, when would the parklets be allowed? Um, what would trigger the parklets? You know, for example, if a restaurant has accessibility to a parking lot, then maybe a parklet isn't necessary. Um, if, if there's a couple of contiguous restaurants that are kind of out on an island alone in the middle of the block, then it would be conducive to a parklet. Uh, but something that, that, yes, we need a plan and, you know, take a closer look at as we evolve this. And we will be bringing that back to the city council uh as things continue to evolve. Um, to answer, I think, Councilmember Papin's question, um, these permits, uh, the, the ordinance this evening suspends the requirement for conditional use permit. And so this process would be through a very simple encroachment permit that engineering and planning would review and sign off on administratively, and that would be done online. Um, and the, the inspections itself would be physical, but the permit process uh would, would be all online.
And is there, is there a timeframe for that? The last thing we want to do is really bog people down.
20 minutes.
Turnaround time.
Literally 20 minutes.
Okay.
Nice.
So, uh, you know, and, and this is why I think the mayor stated in terms of the alleys, right? We have to make sure that the circulation for the fire department and accessibility to, you know, emergency vehicular, vehicles and, and services are there. And that's why we simply want to roll this out and, and then, you know, evolve it over time. But um, some of the things that we think, you know, that we need to think about, um, that alley for trash pickup uh for um emergency vehi- vehicles uh are extremely important. Uh, but the permit.
Mr. Oh, sorry, go ahead.
I was going to say, but the permit itself, we, we've talked about that, making it simple, uh focused and, and a very quick turnaround.
And, and for the permit process, are you referring to sidewalks seating or parklets or both?
So, so the encroachment permit would be for sidewalks and for the parking lots. Um, the parklets itself, an encroachment permit would be required, but that encroachment permit would, would um have to be approved by the city council.
Okay.
So that's kind of how we, how we've designed it.
Any other uh comments that?
Um, and then uh, no, I think, I think that's it. I think that addresses all, all of the questions of the council.
Mayor, I have another.
Vice Mayor Schneider? Yes.
Um, when, when the city manager mentioned one of the restaurants and that they'd like to go outdoor seating, it's one of the ones that I try to avoid because there's so much smoking in the front of that restaurant. Have we, have you all thought about our existing smoking ordinance and food moving outside and how you're going to train people walking up and down the street, which who shouldn't be having masks, which makes it harder to smoke? I don't have the answers. I'm just throwing out there. You should be thinking about smoking in public.
Yeah, I, we, we do have a, a current ordinance on smoking within, I think it's 25 feet of an entry. And uh, so we would be able to enforce that uh in this situation. Also, we didn't go into, but there's a, there's a laundry list under the um health order uh that's required, you know, posting uh of uh um the protocols at the site. The, each restaurant has to have an onsite COVID-19 manager at all times. So there, there's quite a bit that will, that, you know, that's going into restaurants opening up uh for outdoor uh service.
Thank you.
All right. Um, do we have any public comments on this item?
Uh, yes, uh, we do have two items of public comments. I'll go ahead and read those. The first item is from Stephen Green. I urge the city to pass the ordinance to allow the city manager to give restaurants the option to use streets and street parking for dining. As we recover from the shelter-in-place order, the city needs to be as supportive as possible of our local businesses. As demand is lower now than it is likely ever to be, it makes sense to adapt our spaces to the most useful purposes. Right now, that purpose is giving our restaurants more space to accommodate social distancing. Our sidewalks are not wide enough to allow any meaningful amount of tables, and most downtown businesses do not have private parking lots they can repurpose. I applaud the city for considering this and hope to see it approved. Thank you, Stephen Green. The second comment is from Yo-Yo Chue. Dear members of the Millbrae City Council, social distancing protocols will mandate a drastic reduction in indoor seating capacity, and these restrictions will hurt smaller dining rooms significantly more than larger ones. We therefore realize the inevitable need to plan for outdoor dining for a large number of our merchants. I have participated in meetings with the Economic Vitality Advisory Committee, and the urgency with which this matter has been recognized and treated is greatly appreciated. I would like to especially recognize the committee chair, Vernon Bruce, and staff from both the city manager's office and public works with their dedication to Millbrae businesses. One of the realities we realized during these meetings was that there was not going to be an uh one-size-fits-all solution. A business like the Millbrae Pancake House was, with its own private parking lot, is going to have a significantly different outdoor dining plan compared to one in downtown Millbrae that will have to set up tables on city-owned sidewalks and streets. We also realize that there will be no miracle plan that satisfies everyone. When deciding to modify traffic, close streets or occupy existing parking spaces, we'll need to be their operations. Through collaboration, we can balance the needs of all stakeholders in an equitable way. The downtown area will require a special level of attention. I do not personally believe that a full street closure is a good idea at this time. However, ideas like changing vehicle traffic to one-way or building angled parklets that take up a limited amount of parking should be considered. Please refer to the attached photo for an idea of what the parklet might look like. Although the measures taken on by merchants are considered extraordinary and temporary, we should ask ourselves how we might use this as long-term opportunity to increase downtown collaboration amongst business owners, improve our retail diversity, and create a more welcoming and pedestrian-friendly shopping district that will help the city grow economically. A better and more modern Millbrae downtown is possible and achievable, but only if we continue this momentum and continue to work closely with Millbrae's small business community. And that is the end of the um comment, and there is a photo attached which we will, I will share with um staff, and we can get to the council as well. And that concludes public comment.
Thank you very much, uh, Ms. Lewis. Um, so I would like to make a, a minor amendment to the ordinance just to clarify that the street closures would only be for special events. I know Mr. Williams and Ms. Tierney have said that a few times, but I think we just need to be very clear to, um, you know, to business owners downtown um in case they continue to, you know, request uh street closures. You know, just, just to be clear, this will only be for special events, not for any type of sustained period of time.
Mr. Mayor, is that in the uh resolution or the ordinance?
It's in the ordinance.
Okay.
Under section.
Is there is language in the resolution?
Actually, it might have been in the resolution. It was, yeah, resolution, section two.
Just take that out?
Oh, no, I didn't say take it out. I think, I think maybe at the end, you know, for an outdoor, use as an outdoor dining facility for special events or.
Okay, just limited.
Determine, yeah.
He would have discretion for special events.
Yeah, or close any street or portion thereof for special events where he or she determines. Put it in there, if, if I have agreement from the council on that. Yeah.
Sorry, Mayor, what, what section is it?
Um, section two of the resolution about street closures.
Or uses.
The city manager or designee is hereby authorized to close any street or portion thereof when he or she determines that the street is necessary for use as an outdoor dining facility. We would add for special events. What? Not what?
I don't get it.
No, I don't understand that either.
I'm on it.
So my thoughts are, you know.
Could you please repeat it?
I don't know who's, who that was, but um, it, it's been mentioned several times by both the city manager and by Ms., Ms. Tierney as well that that provision was intended to be for special events and not for any type of sustained closure of the streets. We've had people asking us, oh, are we going to close down, close Broadway? I think we need to be clear, no, that's not what we're doing here.
Perhaps we can.
Also, and also it would give the city manager some, some coverage, some cover as well if uh business owners start to, you know, petition him for closing the street. I'm not saying that necessarily would happen.
Perhaps we can add during special events at the end of section two. So it would read uh, uh, when he or she determines that the, the street is necessary for use as an outdoor dining facility during special events.
Or, or only for special events.
Yeah, either one of those would, would work for me.
I like during better only is restrictive.
Well, I, I kind of like to have the idea of moving the farmer's market to a street, somewhere in a street, not take up parking, so much parking. So if we can move the farmer's market to like La Cruz between Al Camino and, and Broadway, which is not, is, is not a used, a very well, I mean, much-used street, then, you know, I don't want to preclude from that from happening.
I think uh, Councilmember, as I recall, when, when you were mayor in the past, and we had those discussions with the chamber and um, they were very uh reluctant to move farmer's market, but.
Yeah, okay, but the chamber doesn't run the city.
No, I know. I, I know, yeah.
So the chamber, the chamber is supposed to, uh, is supposed to, is supposed to promote business. I don't understand by taking up business parking, how's that helping the business?
Yeah. I, I think maybe that's something that we can discuss with, you know, with the chamber and, and see if they'd be willing to.
I'm willing, I'm, I want to make it, make everybody happy by putting uh the market in a larger space where people, where you don't have to compete with cars going through the alley, where cars don't have to, you know, because the parking lot is, is uh it's certain spaces that we really need on a Saturday. And then now we're going to put uh restaurants there. How, where's the, where's the, um, where's the farmer's market going to go?
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's a good idea.
I, I know, we need to answer that right now because where's the farmer market going to go? I didn't hear anything about where's the farmer's market going to go.
Mr. Williams, do you have a, any comments on that?
So that's a great question. First, um, I think Councilmember Oliva and Jared are faster than I am. So I, I, after thinking about during is, is much better, actually. But in terms of farmer's market, that's what we, that's what we've been trying to analyze. What do we do, you know, during Saturdays, during, you know, uh breakfast and brunch and, and lunch, you know, with farmer's market? And so uh, we have some ideas. We haven't finalized those, but we will bring that back to the city council. And, and it may be, you know, that we, we, we've talked about the potential to relocate farmer's market to Library Lane. Uh, we've, you know, I think there was some. We've, you know, I think there was some communication this evening about moving farmer's market temporarily out to the street. And so we need to, we need to do a little bit more analysis and work on some logistics between farmer's market and the needs of the restaurants wanting to open up into those, that one parking lot.
That's, that's the question. If we need to put it up in the street, this would preclude that from happening.
So, so first of all, I'm just reading this over right now. Section 2, it says, "The city manager or designee is hereby authorized to close any street or portion thereof where he or she determines that the street is necessary for use as an outdoor dining facility." So if we move the farmer's market to La Cruz, that would not be an outdoor dining facility. That would be like a marketplace. So I don't think, I don't think the resolution would permit the city manager, as written now, would permit the city manager or anybody from our city to move the farmer's market to La Cruz.
That's right.
Yeah, I think we might have the ability to do that through other, through other means, but...
You can bring it back to the council for a resolution for that purpose.
Yeah, I was just going to recommend that. I, I think that we'll have enough time that, you know, and my preference would be to bring this back to the city council, so we can discuss it and get approval of the city council for something that, you know, would include moving the farmer's market.
Well, we better figure it out, because you can't have, you can't, you know, I don't know how you can put the restaurant there with the farmer's market and traffic.
Yep.
So, I mean, is that going to, is that going to slow us down? I mean, we passed this, but we still can't do it, because the farmer's market's still there on Saturdays.
Yeah, I actually don't see it. In the discussions that we've had with the restaurants, I don't really see it slowing us down. And if it does, then, then if the city's council is in agreement, we can try to get a quorum for a special meeting and communicate to the city council what our recommendation is.
I'm happy to be available.
I think the recommendation at this point would be to, you know, that the restaurants would move, they would take down their tables for the time the farmer's market is closed. Is that how you'd envision that going if we were not to relocate the farmer's market?
Yes.
In other words, they wouldn't be allowed to have outdoor seating Saturdays from however early in the morning until noon or 2:00 p.m.?
Yeah, that's correct, Mayor. I mean, some of the other things is that we were thinking that the frontage road, you know, we could possibly close the frontage road and be able to move the tables to the frontage road and maintain the, the areas for farmer's market. And, you know, so there's a couple of different scenarios that could possibly work. So the farmer's market, you know, is retained in the parking lot, but the dining, the tables are actually, you know, for that period of time out on the closed frontage road. But those are, those are just a couple of ideas that we've...
I really think that at some point, I mean, it's not the part of subject that we really need to, to, if we want to expand the farmer's market, it's a win-win situation. We can expand the farmer's market and get parking if we, if we can, you know, move the farmer's market to a street.
Yeah, it makes sense to me.
That's in the future, but...
Honestly, I've thought a lot about it, and if we could get farmer's market to move to Library Lane, you know, that's a pretty good viable option, I think.
People will go to where the farmer's market is, they don't care. If our market pops up somewhere, they're going to go.
Well, the nice thing is there's plenty of parking and, and we're not disrupting the, because I have received a lot of complaints from restaurants that the farmer's market impacts one of their busiest times, which is, you know, breakfast and brunch in that, in the area, the kitchen and all the restaurants along.
Mayor?
Yeah, I mean, I think La Cruz is a good location, because it would allow, you know, people to wander downtown afterwards, whereas Library Lane, I mean, it's not far, but it's a little bit removed from the rest of our downtown.
Yeah, no, that's a good point, too, yeah.
Mayor, you don't want to put restrictions on businesses on when they can do business. So when you put, start putting hours, it's going to limit their ability to perform. And I have a problem with that. So if we're going to, if we're going to open up a parking lot, we're not going to say you can have it between 2:00 and 6:00. It just, that's unfair.
Yeah, because you have to set up the chairs and tables, it's a lot of work.
And, and you have patrons coming, you're going to have a bad reputation. I mean, that's just bad business.
Yeah, well, I mean, this is, you know, it is a privilege that we're offering to allow, or proposing to offer city parking spaces for, you know, private use. So, I mean, I, I'm not particularly concerned if the restaurants would just have to move their tables for, you know, half of one day a week and would have access to it basically any other time except for Saturday morning and early afternoon. But, but I agree, I think we need, we need a plan here.
And Mayor, with all due respect, it shouldn't be a privilege. It should be our privilege to be able to allow them to use something that we have. It's our privilege to give.
Okay.
You know, I mean, Section 2, maybe we should just get rid of close any street and just say, close portions thereof.
Yeah, I'm okay with that. So I don't think any complete streets would be closed at any time.
No, I mean, that's the same thing.
Yeah. Okay, I do see a few hands up. I don't know if these are new comments or old comments, if they have been up for a while. Let's go to Councilwoman Oliva.
No, my hand was, it was up too long.
It was up too long, okay. All right, Vice Mayor Schneider?
Just a reminder that the chamber stores all the tables and awnings right at that location. So when we talk about moving them, that's a distance of people manually moving tables someplace. So we just have to think about the storage of that.
Well, I think the restaurants will have to do the same thing, too. They would have to move their tables and stuff, too, so. Everybody has to move stuff.
Man, I, yeah, I think if we could move it to La Cruz, I think that would work.
It gives them more space, they can expand their operation, and if people love, the Berlin King closes their streets every Sunday and Thursdays, or every other certain days in a month on Thursdays, and then they open, they close it every Sunday.
Okay. Any other comments on, on either the ordinance or the...
I move for approval.
Second.
Mayor Holliver, may I have clarification on the exact change of language that we're using on the resolution?
Yeah, Section 2, we're removing close. Authorized to, oh, no, not close, closed.
I think Mr. Yan, you had a recommendation for...
Moving street and/or, so it just reads, so it reads thereby authorized to close any portion thereof.
So perhaps, and any portion of any street where he or she determines that the street is necessary for use as an outdoor dining facility during special events. So, so the entire, the entire thing would read that the city manager or designee is hereby authorized to close any portion of any street where he or she determines that the street is necessary for use as an outdoor dining facility during special events.
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
I'm good.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right, it sounded like we have a motion from, I think it was Councilman Lee? And who had seconded it?
I did.
Councilwoman Pappin, okay.
And this is on both the ordinance and the resolution?
Yes.
Yes. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Pappin?
Aye.
Councilmember Oliva?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Schneider?
Aye.
Mayor Holliver?
Aye.
"The city council has unanimously adopted an urgency ordinance suspending restrictions on outdoor dining and has unanimously authorized the city manager to close streets and restrict parking to facilitate outdoor dining with the above-noted change to the resolution to include the wording or the language during special events to Section 2 of the resolution."
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Williams, you did mention a couple of times that you would like to bring this back to the city council, maybe for, you know, implementation of the plan. How do you envision that?
Yeah, I see us, you know, coming up with some more details on the parklet idea and concept, and then working with the downtown merchants for kind of a master plan for special events throughout the summer, and bring that back to the city council for review.
Okay, so in the meantime, only sidewalk parking would be, or sidewalk seating would be permitted?
Yes, so sidewalk and the parking lots. We do have one parklet that we did issue an interim encroachment permit for, and that's for Fiddler's Green, so we're going to have to figure out how we, how we can kind of continue with that authority and approval. And again, the frontage road on El Camino provides different opportunities than the constraints on Broadway, just the nature of the width of the sidewalk, the two-way road, the width of the road. So what we'll probably do is, yeah, we'll bring on the 23rd some recommendations and then some approvals, you know, for the city council consideration.
Thank you very much, and this is getting a slight little bit off topic here, but we have the parklet on Hillcrest. Go ahead, which one?
Oh, no, no, I just want to say before we left that, you know, again, Lisa and Key and all the staff, you know, big appreciation, and then I wanted to also recognize Jared Yan for one of our attorneys who really did a significant amount of work quickly. So I just wanted to recognize his great work as well.
Thank you very much. Thank you, everyone that was involved. I was just going to say, this is maybe a bit off topic from the discussion here, but we have the parklet on Hillcrest in front of the Noodle House that has been, you know, it's been, it's been up there for a couple of years now. My observation going well before COVID was that it was pretty much never any use. So maybe that's something that we can look at, kind of like what a long-term policy would be for, for parklets and, you know, how they're, how they're issued and how they eventually can be potentially returned back to the city if there has not been any use demonstrated. So that's, I think, just something to look at going forward. Okay, let's move on to council comments.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Williams, yeah.
One, one other point of clarification, because again, this is fluid and we're learning, and it's not an actionable item, but just concurrence that the encroachment permit that we did issue for Fiddler's, that we can continue on a temporary basis until we can bring that to the council for final approval for the parklet to stay true to what's adopted tonight, but in an interim period of time, continue to allow that.
I would agree with that. It seems like it's being well-used.
Thank you.
Okay, let's go to council comments, and maybe we can start with, how about Councilwoman Pappin?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Try to go quickly here. I hope we can get a press release out for all this, the last agenda item, so that we can really advertise our businesses real quick. I would also like to suggest, now that we're on our, I don't know how many Zoom meetings, that certain council members be given some assistance on their screen time here. Some, I mean, this is really looking bad, people. We need to get some instruction and help some of our colleagues at least look professional or put up a photo, because it's, it's not looking good. So if we could get that advice out, I think people watching, if anybody's still watching, would appreciate it. I would like to suggest that we, as noted earlier, try to agendize that stop sign issue so that we can be resolved in one way, shape, or form. Also, if we could get an update on the approved developments around the station area or get some sort of a subcommittee going, I would appreciate that as well. I know everybody's busy at this point in time. I am looking forward to the demonstration on Saturday and the way it's progressing. Thank you to the residents that are really putting together something that hopefully will be educational and lead to some change in action so that we can step away from future events or tragedies that occurred to Mr. George Floyd and many, many others, too many others. MTC meets tomorrow, and they are working through their station, their 2050 plan. They are working through a whole bunch of different issues. I will also recommend to this city council that we try to set up a meeting with them regarding our issues with the high-speed rail and get some of our own time in there. The letter went out, and I appreciate everybody's efforts on that one, but I think we need to still pursue and educate those around us as to what high-speed rail is trying to do and what projects we have in the works. So I think we still need to keep that one going. We also, I attended the Blue Ribbon Transportation Recovery Committee, and we had our first meeting with everybody, I don't know how many representatives speaking here, but they will be significantly others, moving ahead here, trying to make transportation safe for everyone and get people back on public transportation. There are millions of dollars coming from the federal government. The first tranche of what they call the CARES money was distributed. The second part of that money is going to be distributed sometime coming up very soon, but we do want to make sure it's spent appropriately into the most effective and efficient manner and also have some sort of equity attached to it. So a lot of work ahead. I'm very honored to be on that and represent San Mateo County. So hopefully, we can make public transportation better than ever. And we also, I want to publicly thank Bevan Dufny from San Francisco, probably the only BART board member who's actually been out to our Millbury station and who's actually made a huge difference, working with us to stop the sound from the garage, helping clean up out there. There's still a lot of work to be done there as well. Finally, we have some signage up, but the homeless issue is still an issue, because BART refuses to really enforce fare. They have too many fare evasors, and we are ending up with people who don't really want to be here. So we have a lot of work to do, and hopefully, we can approve that. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Let's go to Vice Mayor Schneider.
Okay, first, a comment to Ms. Pappin's statement. As I said earlier, my old laptop is stuck with one screen on and doesn't work, so I did buy a new computer, and it worked fine for Zoom calls all day today, and then Outlook decided that it wanted to shut down. So my apologies to the public, not to the councilwoman. All right, with that, I have been appointed to the statewide commission, the California Statewide Commission on Recycling Markets and Curbside Recycling. It's to look at the markets and the fact that because of markets, most of the places where people could take their cans and bottles to, to get money back, have closed. So in fact, in San Mateo County, there are only a couple of locations, and those closed with COVID, only recently reopening. So we'll be looking at markets and manufacturing in the state. The, I attended C-KAG's B-PAC. I want to congratulate and thank former Mayor Cola Pietra for her many years of service on the C-KAG B-PAC. She has stepped down off of that committee, as has Meadows Principal Dana Lujan, who's also on the South San Francisco Unified School District Board, so it was always a conflict for her. Both of them have stepped off the B-PAC. There have been new appointees, but they are not from our area. So we are now weakened in terms of having people who care or have a familiarity with Millbury and our bike pedestrian areas. So staff, when we write for grants, we're going to have to be that much better with our grant writing. On the plus side, Malcolm Robinson, who was our vice chair, has now stepped into the chair position, and I am now the vice chair of that committee. There is a deadline coming up for the Safe Routes to Schools Bike Program. It's June 30th, so it's going to be here before you know it, with Vaughn leaving the school district and Dana no longer as accessible. I hope that staff can reach out to the school district and find out if we can apply. We haven't received a Safe Routes to Schools... We haven't received a Safe Routes to School grant in well over five years. I was trying to remember if it was 2011 or 2013. But it would be great to be able to use this for walking audits. It's a program that many of the cities have used to try to identify ways that people might modify their front yard landscaping to increase visibility so that children walking to school or their parents or guardians walking with them can be visible to drivers. It can look at curbs that might be dangerous and other things like that, other things that are stuck in the street that make it difficult to walk. So it would really be worth it to the city of Millbrae to apply for that grant. I already gave you one of the reports on the roundtable and I think everybody on the elected official briefing heard Mr. Sotero talk about the COVID precautions that are happening at the airport. However, it still doesn't mean that they're taking precautions once a customer leaves the airport and either gets onto BART, a bus, a taxi, or Uber or Lyft, or back into their residential car. So I'm, I'm still concerned about transference or new infections of COVID on that. So want us to keep working on that. Ground-based noise, Tom, I think we're at the point where we're gonna need to write a letter from the city requesting from the airport, the use of the temporary portable noise monitors so that we can begin to identify where noise is concentrating in Canyon. So if you can help me with staff and we can get that letter, we can get ready for the next ground-based noise meeting, which will probably be in July, to get ready for approval in August. The next roundtable meeting will be looking at a $50,000 study. It's called a spectral analysis. And what that is, is looks at vegetation and what vegetation might be best at sound absorption, which then also can help with climate, climate change with carbon absorption. So, but it's a $50,000 contract. It wasn't on last week's agenda because of COVID and unsure of where the budget is, but it should be coming forward in August and we need to have our ducks in a row for that, all of us that are close into the airport. And I'll finish with MCAC, Cultural Arts Advisory Committee and Community Enhancement Committee would both like to get their meetings restored contrary to what was told. And also with Senator Hill, I reported out for the city on where we are with housing. I did bring up high-speed rail. The senator told me that he had spoken directly with the CEO of High-Speed Rail, Brian Kelly, and that Brian Kelly was going to reach out to the city and to me. Brian Kelly and I had a conversation today. I offered to buy him a drink, Tom, to get him down here for that meeting so that he and his staff can come and see what the area really looks like. And he said that he would work with Boris to clear the calendar and try to get down here, but I think we do need to keep the pressure on.
Yeah, I'm not gonna buy him a drink. I think it's his obligation.
I know, but if it, if it means, you know, I found out, we should, he's, he's actually spent the first 10 years of his life in San Francisco and then grew up in Contra Costa County. He's not familiar at all with our area. He did liken us to some similarities with the Duradon Station in who owns the station and who doesn't. I think he's confused. I think he thinks that Millbrae owns the station, the way San Jose owns the train station down there. So one wonders what kind of information is getting fed to him. But we did have a pleasant phone conversation. So that's it.
Okay, let's go to Councilwoman Oliva.
Respect, I can get this through without the puppies. Sorry, guys. Forget the photos, Councilwoman Pappin. I got puppies in the background. So I did, I had the, hit the economic vitality meetings and again, kudos to staff. It was just run very well and I hope that our businesses are knowing that, that we're trying to be sensitive and do what we can for them. I'm very grateful that we can do what we can. I also want to comment that we did a lot of graduation parades, the, the five of us, and that was quite fun and enjoyable. And congratulations once again to all those, those graduates. Mayor, we've heard a lot about design committees, subcommittees, development committees, Peninsula Animal Control Committees, subcommittees. I really would like to encourage that we get these as subcommittees formed and I'm hoping that we can see some sort of development subcommittee on the next agenda. We are in times that are really important to look for the future and not have to be unprepared for anything that comes in our near future like we're in. And thankfully, we're, we are prepared and we have some good sources and we have good support. But I'd like to see that we move forward in the next year or so with people that still want to invest and we can look and have a subcommittee help out with our staff that is obviously pretty overwhelmed in these times. And then this coming Thursday, I'll meet with Sal, the Sheriff's Activity League, which is obviously has some pretty intense conversations going on at this time. And with COVID wanting to take care of the kids in the neighborhood and build relationships with the sheriffs, it'll be, it'll be something I can report next meeting to what steps they're taking to address what's going on in the community. And lastly, you know, today's my dad's birthday and it's always a special day for me. I don't have my dad, but it's gonna be Father's Day on June 21st and we will not meet again, the five of us. So I wish everybody, we all have a dad, so everybody, Happy Father's Day. And I'll leave it at that.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman Oliva. Okay, let's go to Councilman Lee.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And Councilwoman Oliva, thank you for your Father's Day wishes. I'm sure City Manager Williams can speak for City Manager Williams. And I'm also very grateful for to have the opportunity to share a moment this morning to kneel in remembrance of George Floyd and what's going on in the country. I hope, we're wishing that the, hoping our country heals and we can address racism and inequalities together. On our screen, thank you, City Manager Williams, for posting. This is a picture from this morning. So I just want to thank my colleagues for, for the opportunity to participate. And then again, the vigil is this Saturday at noon at Central Park on, I believe they're gonna be walking around the neighborhood and down the city, city hall and it's gonna last hour and a half to be speeches. And it's supposed to be, I understand, it's supposed to be kind of family event. So it's teaching children what, you know, about protesting and about inequalities. The Asian, the San Mateo County Asian Pacific Islander Caucus sent out a statement denouncing the tragedy that happened to George Floyd and, and encouraging people to, to learn about racism and also to denounce the attack on, and Councilwoman Amorous Lee in San Mateo, somebody threw a rock through her front window with her family there during the day. She had American flag in the front of the house on the window, so they don't know if it's a hate crime or, or just vandalism or whatever. So our, our best wishes to Councilwoman Lee. ABAG is gonna have a general meeting coming next, I think, next week and they're going to talk about the budget and, and especially talk about RENA. I got a call from Southern California. Some of my, some of my friends down in Southern California about the, they're very concerned with the RENA number and so is Northern California, how they're coming up with those numbers and those, and those RENA numbers are regional housing allocation. What cities are, are supposed to commit to and, and they're supposed to be fines and, and sanctions against cities who don't meet those numbers. And it's fine that we should build housing and Millbrae is probably gonna over, is gonna probably really overbuild the RENA numbers, I suspect. But still, it should be fair to all, all communities and, and some committee, communities, you know, like Colma can't be expected to have, you know, they have a lot of space, but their space is pretty much taken. So it's, it's not, it's not, some of it's not done realistically. And then, so ABAG is also looking at adapting some changes to the bylaws. It's just, it's, it's not, it's not something, anyway, so, and then the Peninsula Clean Energy, they're looking at having a smaller revenue stream because of COVID. And they are also approved some money to, to, to get money to low-income housing and provide them with emergency power in case of interruption. And they're also approved a new plan to remove nuclear power from their portfolio, which will cost, which will cost Peninsula Clean Energy an extra, I think, extra million dollars just to do that. So, but they feel that they can absorb that. So, and then the Lions Club is gonna have a changeover of their leadership coming up in next Wednesday, or no, two Wednesdays from now, and it'll be online and everybody's invited. I will be the president of the.
Congratulations.
Thank you. And I'm very honored to be asked to do that or selected to do that. And I, I look forward to, the Lions Club looks forward to their close relationship with other community organizations as well as the city. And we all gonna have to really pull our bootstraps together this year because of the, you know, the change, this is a whole different world this year. And until we get a vaccine, we won't be able to go back to normal. And I encourage people to can, continue to observe social distancing. The, the rise, the COVID inspections are on the rise. And even though we're opening up, you, you need to be very careful. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, Councilman Lee. Okay, I attended the Caltrain Local Policymakers Group meeting. There was a discussion about high-speed rail, mostly just them presenting their plans for projects around the state. The EIR for the San Francisco to San Jose Project Section will be released in July, so we need to keep an eye open for it and make sure we comment at that time, comment quite forcefully because I have a feeling the station plan and that EIR is gonna look very similar to the station plan designs that we've been seeing all along despite, despite our protests and our comments with them. I also attended a meeting convened by the Silicon Valley Leadership Group. They are convening a Silicon Valley Recovery Roundtable featuring business leaders, nonprofits, various groups, government groups around, around the region. They also have as part of that effort, a mayor's circle, featuring a number of mayors, there are about 30, 35 mayors or so from around San Mateo and Santa Clara Counties. And Alameda County as well, who attended. It was a very good event. We had some initial discussions about how we reach out to, you know, marginalized communities, disadvantaged communities through different communication channels. Also, a lot of concern from a number of the other mayors in that group regarding revenue shortfalls in the upcoming year due to COVID. But we will be meeting again a couple more times, once in July in August. I'll keep you all updated on that. Also, the RFP for the Rec Center submissions are due, I believe, this Friday. Is that the deadline? Mr. Lam or Mr. Williams?
Correct, Friday.
Okay, so we're looking forward to reviewing those RFPs, holding final interviews and selecting a contractor, a design-build firm and plan to break ground at some point before the end of the summer. So that's quite exciting. Definitely looking forward to it. And then we, yeah, it was mentioned by Councilwoman Oliva, we had a couple of graduation parades on May 29th honoring Mills and Cappuccino graduates. Congratulations very much. And then also on June 4th, honor both events. A lot of community pride. A lot of people participated, especially in the Taylor Parade, dozens and dozens of cars. Many people lined up on the streets. It was just very wonderful to see that and, and, you know, a ray of hope despite the, you know, the events that we're, we're dealing with, both in terms of COVID and tragedies around the country. So let's close and close the meeting in honor of Mr. Floyd's memory and that it will not be, certainly will not be forgotten. And hopefully we will have, you know, we'll honor all of the victims of injustice throughout our country's history, both recent and long term. And thank the protesters for all the hard work and hopefully we'll bring about some much-needed changes in the near future. So thank you, everyone, and we will adjourn for the evening and reconvene on June 23rd. Thanks very much and have a good night.